Thank you. Well, welcome everyone. Happy Wednesday. Ms. Tanner, have you certified this meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair. As of August 19, 2020, notice was provided for fill-in-all-criteria VA Code, Chapter 37.
Thank you, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. Please call the rule.
Yes. Basin?
Here.
Campson?
Here.
Clanton?
Present.
Gabriel?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Martin?
Here. Okay, we have a really packed meeting today. We have a workshop and then executive session and then a business meeting at 7:00. So I'd like to go ahead and just jump right in so that we can provide enough time for discussion because we have really important decisions, multiple decisions to make today. So I'd like to turn this over to our Superintendent, Dr. Birdsong.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the School Board, and members of our community. Thank you for the opportunity to share a few thoughts with you today before we begin this afternoon's workshop to continue discussing the plan to return our students to in-person instruction. Because so much work has taken place over the last few months, I think it would be helpful to our community if I took just a couple of minutes to bring everyone up to date on the timeline that has brought us to this point today. At the July 15th School Board meeting, the administration presented four options to the School Board for returning students to learning during next school year. One of these options was to offer students a 100% online virtual learning experience. Later that month, on July the 22nd, at a special call meeting, the School Board voted to return students to an all-virtual learning format for the first nine weeks of school. And as I previously shared, our School Board led the way in the region in making a decision regarding how students and staff would start this new school year. Once the Board made the decision for a 100% virtual start, the administration began to implement plans to ensure a seamless transition to virtual learning, all the while looking ahead and planning for the possibility at some point of returning our students to in-person learning. On August 12th, the administration provided great detail to the Board regarding plans being put in place for the virtual school year, including academic schedules, mobile device distribution, and childcare programs, just to name a few areas. On September 16th, the Board requested and received a comprehensive presentation of all aspects of the virtual school reopening. And then on September 30th, Dr. Demetria Lindsay, the Director of Public Health for Norfolk and Virginia Beach, presented a wealth of information to the Board regarding the health metrics of the city of Norfolk and the surrounding region, which brings us to October. As you may recall, during our last meeting on October the 7th, the administration presented to the Board a detailed plan to return students to in-person instruction. We had a solid and productive discussion regarding that plan, and today we will provide greater detail at the Board's request about those areas in which Board members desired more information. But before we begin our presentation and discussion this afternoon, I want to emphasize that no matter in what the direction the School Board decides to go, I believe our community recognizes that this will not be an easy decision. We certainly have received lots of feedback on both sides of the issue. And of course, one of the Board's roles is to reflect the sentiment and values of the Norfolk community, which it represents. But ultimately, in making a decision, the Board must determine the risk level that our parents, guardians, and community members will be comfortable with taking in returning our students, teachers, and staff back to school buildings for in-person learning. This is a decision that no doubt weighs heavy on our minds as we are committed to maintaining safety as our number-one priority and doing what's in the best interest of our students and staff, as well as for our families and our community. But let me assure you that no matter what the direction or decision the Board makes this afternoon, the administration stands ready to implement this direction. And with that, let's get started with our presentation. I'm pleased to introduce Dr. James Poole, our Chief Academic Officer, who will review new data, including results from our last two surveys of families and teachers that will give us some good insights into virtual learning and the return of students to in-person learning. Dr. Poole will also present some data on our students' equity and opportunity. Then he will review the proposed hybrid plan to return students to in-person learning, as well as a review, he will review the preparations necessary to ensure the hybrid plan is successful. Dr. Poole will also present two timelines for the rollout of the hybrid plan for all of our students. Next, Dr. Michael Cataldo, our Chief Information and Instructional Technology Officer, will present an update on the Virtual Scholars Academy, including the number of enrolled students, as well as information regarding camera equipment that will be installed in classrooms for instruction. Then, Dr. Lanell T. Gibson, our Chief Schools Officer, will review and discuss the recommended CDC indicators and thresholds for risk of introduction and transmission of COVID-19 in schools that was previously shared with the Board during the latest School Board work session. Dr. Gibson will also share the CDC's assessment of the transmission risk in schools and associated learning modalities scenarios. Then she will give an update on the childcare programs and the role of our school nurses in health mitigation. Finally, last but not least, Mr. Rick Fraley, our Chief Operations Officer, will provide an overview of what's taking place in our facilities with our mitigation strategies, including mask-wearing, social distancing, and hand washing. Mr. Fraley will also review how our buildings are being cleaned and disinfected, as well as the process for contact tracing and building readiness checks. As always, we welcome the Board's questions and thoughts. So without further ado, let's get started. Dr. Poole, I'll turn it over to you at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Martin, Vice Chairman Jordan, members of the Board, and Dr. Birdsong. I'm here this afternoon with my colleagues, Dr. Cataldo, Dr. Gibson, and Mr. Fraley, to present updates to the in-person learning plan. As Dr. Birdsong gave you an overview, this afternoon, we'll review data, an instructional update for the hybrid plan, virtual scholars information, CDC metrics, childcare considerations, and health mitigation information. Data from the instructional parent and guardian and teacher surveys, as well as the in-person learning surveys for parents and guardians and all staff, will be reviewed as we start the presentation. For the parent and guardian instructional survey, the response window was open between September 30 through October 7. There was a total of 3,796 parent responses, representing 5,785 students. This survey represents 3,214 students from the elementary level, 1,230 from the middle school level, and 1,341 from the high school level. This represents a response rate of approximately 21% of our students being represented. For comparison, the average response rate for our annual parent surveys is approximately 12%. Overall, 65% of parents agree or strongly agree the online instruction with a teacher is going well. At the high school level, 70% agree or strongly agree, with 72% at the middle school level, and 59% at the elementary level. 76% of the responses agreed or strongly agreed their child is receiving the support and instructions needed from their teachers to complete their assigned work. These totals remain consistent across levels as well, with high school agreement being 73%, middle school being 77%, and elementary at 76%. The overall agreement about students being able to complete their assignments with little to no help from their parents and guardians was 62%. As could be expected, the secondary levels were higher than the elementary level. High school had an 81% agreement level, and middle school had a 76% agreement level, while elementary had the lowest agreement at 50%. Across the division, there's a 95% agreement that students have the necessary devices to participate in virtual learning. Agreement among high school is 96%, middle school is 95%, and elementary is 93%. Similarly, there was a 93% agreement having internet access across the division. At the high school level, this was 95%, the middle school level, 94%, at the elementary level, there was a 92% agreement level. The final statement we'll be reviewing from the parent and guardian instructional survey focuses on students adjusting well to virtual learning. Across the division, there is a 63% agreement level with the statement. The agreement level at high school, 69%, at middle school, 71%, and elementary, it is 56%. Moving on to the teacher instructional survey, the response window was from September 30 through October 7, and a total of 1,233 teachers responded. There were 726 responses at the elementary level, 231 at the middle school level, and 276 at the high school level. Overall, 66% of teachers agree that learning resources provided by the division are useful. The agreement level at the high school is 62%, the middle school is 69%, and elementary was 68%. Across the division, 63% of teachers agree they have the technology necessary to conduct virtual learning. The agreement was 66% at the high school level, 64% at the middle school level, and 63% at the elementary school level. 69% of the teachers across the division feel they have the support from administration and other staff in reaching students who are not fully engaged. Of important note, over 18% answered "they're not sure", which leaves just over 12% that do not agree they have the support needed. Across levels, there is 64% agree and 21% that are not sure at the high school level. At the middle school level, there is 62% that agree and 24% that are not sure, and 74% who agree at the elementary level, with 16% who are not sure. Each building principal had developed protocols for teachers to follow if they could not reach students who are not showing up or engaging in lessons once the school year started. Staff members are working during and after school hours to engage students. They are contacting parents via any method possible, including visiting homes. Schools have been provided with funds to work with students to complete any missing assignments and to keep them engaged in the learning process. Across the division, just over 55% of teachers are pleased with how virtual learning has progressed during the first few weeks of school. Again, this statement has a large "not sure" response of just over 22% across the division. As seen on this slide, 78% of high school teachers agree or are not sure, 81% of the middle school teachers at that level, and 78% at the elementary level. As anticipated, agreement responses for being provided enough planning time to create engaging lessons was low at the time of the survey, with an overall agreement rate of 33.1% and a 27% agreement level at the high schools, and 28% at the middle school level, and 27% at the elementary level. The transition to asynchronous Wednesdays that started last week has most likely shifted this data in a positive manner. The last point we will review from the staff survey is the question of what professional development teachers feel is most needed. Without reading all the responses on the slide, you can note that based on this data from this question, the first asynchronous Wednesday last week had several offerings for campuses. That was the highest need the teachers requested. Moving to the response data from the in-person learning survey sent to parents and guardians of non-VSA students with a completion window of October 13th through October 16th, there were 2,934 responses, representing a total of 4,465 students out of the 20,990 total non-VSA students. There were 2,249 elementary students, 944 middle school students, and 1,172 high school students represented. As a reminder, this survey was sent to non-VSA students, and the results being shared together from the raw response data, the response rate for student representation on the survey was also approximately 21%. As seen on this slide, 61.6% of the respondents would elect to send their child to school if the Board votes to restart in-person learning at the start of the second quarter. The transportation information shows that 27.6% of parents and guardians of students who are provided a bus will not have their child ride the bus. Looking differently at this data, there were a total of 2,833 responses that indicated their students are traditional bus riders. Therefore, 42.5% of the students who would normally ride a bus would not elect to ride a bus. For the teacher and staff survey for in-person learning, the window was from October 12th through the 15th, with a total of 3,311 responses. The staff were asked to select one of the following choices. "I intend to physically report to my work assignment as required." "I intend to physically report to my work assignment with a request for accommodations." "And I do not intend to physically report to my work assignment as required and will provide supporting documentation." As seen on this slide, 2,409 or just under 73% of the respondents intend to return. 683 or just under 21% intend to request accommodations, and just under 7% or 219 of the respondents do not intend to physically report to their work assignment. As the data shows across the bottom row, the highest number of respondents were teachers and the lowest were bus drivers. Additionally, staff were asked if they feel it's safe to return to work with social distancing and wearing masks. As can be seen, only 19.66% agree with this statement. The last set of data to be reviewed are focused around students with disabilities, English learners, pre-K through 3, and overall school numbers. This slide demonstrates the enrollment counts for students with disabilities enrolled in self-contained classes. There are a total of 17 elementary schools with self-contained classrooms. On average, the student count is approximately 17 at each school, with the smallest enrollment being four and the largest being 39. The median student count across elementary schools is 15 students. At the middle school level, the average student count per school is just above 19 students, with the smallest per school being five and the largest being 52, and the median of middle schools is seven students. At the high school level, we have a total of 137 students and an average of just over 27 per school. The minimum count per school is 11, and the highest is 38, and their median is 33 students. This is a total of 545 self-contained learners across our division. This slide shows the current number of Level 1 and 2 English learner students. The average count by elementary school is 13 students, with the minimum count being zero and the maximum being 51, and a median number of 10. There are a total of 388 English learner students at the elementary level. At the secondary level, there are a total of 168 students, which are broken down by school on the slide. The possibility of using select schools to have English learner students return for in-person learning is currently being explored. This would allow teachers to remain in one school and allow for additional supports for our EL students. The final data slide includes student counts across pre-K through 3rd grade. The first column represents the level. The next is the total count across the division. Next is the average teacher count across the division. Next are the House A and House B columns. These represent the average count of students in rooms under the hybrid schedule with House A attending Monday and Tuesday, and House B attending on Thursday and Friday. The final column represents the average number of VSA students per teacher across the division. As you can see, schedulers did a wonderful job of ensuring an equal number of students attending during each in-person session. The final data set for overall numbers was included with the uploaded documents. Here is the updated proposed hybrid plan for in-person learning. With the addition of webcams to every room, teachers will be able to provide four days of live instruction for all students. As an example, if I were an A-group student, I would attend in person on Monday and Tuesday. I would have asynchronous or self-paced learning for Wednesday. Then I would have live learning via Zoom on Thursday and Friday. Additionally, VSA students will have live instruction on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays via Zoom. And self-contained students with disabilities will have four days a week of in-person learning. This schedule maximizes learning times for all students and allows for teachers to have additional live instructional time. This slide provides a visual as to what a teacher-student group may look like. This teacher has eight House A students and seven House B students and five VSA students. Their total is set as 20 students of record. On Mondays and Tuesdays, they would be teaching the eight House A students in person, and the 12 House B and VSA students via Zoom. While on Thursdays and Fridays, they will teach the seven House B students in person and the 13 House A and VSA students through Zoom, with all students having asynchronous lessons on Wednesdays. In order to prepare for a hybrid schedule, several plans have been and are being developed to take place. Professional development has continued with a focus on Canvas, use of Google Documents, Zoom functions, and content sessions being based around the virtual learning environment. Sessions on teaching in the hybrid model with a webcam are being developed for use as early as next week. Additionally, asynchronous lessons are being created by the curriculum and instruction team with assistance from teachers across the division for all teachers to have access to use. These lessons will align with second-quarter enhanced pacing charts that are being finalized with input from graded level and subject area teachers across the division. In an effort to strengthen efforts, division-level staff have been collaborating with teacher groups for feedback. Information is being gleaned from special education teachers and a return-to-learn community of practice, a group of pre-K teachers, town hall meetings with teachers offering from every school, standard department chair meetings, and monthly meetings with leaders from the NFT and EAN. Finally, Wednesday offerings for professional development and collaboration are being sent to all staff each Monday, allowing them a choice in what they're signing up to learn. These include options such as Canvas, virtual planning and teaching, Zoom, and opportunities to collaborate across schools in specific content areas where there may only be one teacher in each building. Surveys are also going out following these sessions for additional insight from teachers on what they would like to see next week. Last week, there were over 800 attendees for sessions on the very first asynchronous Wednesday. Here is the original proposed timeline with a few minor changes. The first phase of students on November 4th would include pre-K through 3 instead of pre-K through 2. Also mentioned earlier, all self-contained students would attend school four days a week for in-person learning. During this first phase of in-person learning, all grades 4 through 12, except for the mentioned groups above, would continue online with the current schedule. For the next phase on November 16th, the remainder of elementary students would begin hybrid schedule with all secondary students, except for those included in the first phase, remaining on the current online schedule. The next phase would add all middle school students, with high school students remaining online, except for those students in the first phase. Finally, on January 4th, all groups would be following the hybrid schedule. Based on feedback from the Board following the October 7th meeting, a less aggressive timeline is being presented to the Board as well. This would follow the same pattern of groups entering buildings for in-person learning. However, the time between groups entering buildings for in-person learning would be greater. The first group would still be November 4th. The next would move to November 30th, then January 4th for the start of any secondary students. And by February 1st, we'd add high school for all students to be on the hybrid schedule. At this time, I'm glad to take a pause, and I'm prepared to answer questions you may have before turning the presentation over to Dr. Cataldo.
Ms. Campson, then Ms. Basin? And I'm sorry, I have to adjust my screen. I didn't see if anyone else's hands are up. Ms. Smith?
Am I going now, or is Ms. Smith going?
You're going. You, and then Ms. Basin, and then Ms. Smith.
Okay, I do have a question about this, but first I wanted to say that it seems like before we discuss opening times, that it would be helpful to the Board to look at the science and that we get from the CDC and their recommendations, and the core and secondary items that should be in place for safety. Because it seems like that would do the foundation for all of this. And I was hoping that perhaps we could go to our medical expert, Dr. Gabriel, for some comments on this. I'm not sure if that's appropriate, Dr. Martin, but it just seems like that the science and the health metric should make the foundation of all of our discussion about beginning the reopening of our school buildings. So I'll defer to Dr. Martin on that decision.
So would you like to skip to? Dr. Birdsong, would you be able to skip to Slide 42?
Yeah, I was going to, if it's the will of the Board, we were certainly or are certainly prepared today to review local and regional health metrics, and that was going to be a part of Dr. Gibson's presentation. But it's certainly up to you if you want to skip to that. We're happy to do so. We're flexible.
Okay.
Um.
Ms. Campson, do you have a follow-up?
Well, I just wanted to say, I don't, oh, everything's bouncing around. I would like to start with our doctor and have her, if she's ready, Dr. Gabriel.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
So that we establish what the Board, I know you're doing all kinds of mitigation stuff and all of that, and I'm very eager to hear it. But before, it's hard for me to make a decision until the Board's made a decision about where they stand with implementation of the CDC guidelines, so that that should be determining where we go with all the decisions we make today. So I would like to have Dr. Gabriel, if she's ready, to maybe, I'd like to give my point, my place to Dr. Gabriel, so that she can speak a little bit about it now and maybe take us there, if that's all right.
Okay, Dr. Gabriel, did you have something prepared?
I mean, I'm definitely prepared to make a motion with regards to the health metrics for the division, and I'm happy to jump right into that now, if we can do so, because I would, I mean, I certainly appreciate reviewing the data for today. But I think that we have all been in deep discussion about the primary and the secondary indicators, and we've all heard Dr. Lindsay's presentation on the risk that Norfolk communities will bear should we have, you know, an increase in our COVID-19 disease burden in our communities. So I'm fully prepared to make a motion right now, and that might help to kind of target our discussions, our very good discussions, I believe, to something that can get us to a point of action and direction for the division. And I can do that right now.
Okay, I'd actually like to hear from the administration on their mitigation plan and then go into your recommending. I'd like to hear from the administration first and then have your comments.
Okay.
So, um, so Ms. Basin and Ms. Smith, is it okay if we hold off on your questioning and go right into the mitigation plan?
That's fine.
Ms. Basin? You're on mute.
Um, I'm honestly not sure what's happening right now, but I feel like we're just jumping through the presentation, and I'd like to take it as planned and prepared. I don't like that. Myself and Ms. Smith's opportunity to ask questions was just jumped over to follow line. But I'm willing to go along, but I hope you'll come back to those, to our questions once this is through.
Okay, absolutely. Well, I think, you know, from previous conversations, I know that there's a real desire to get right to the conversation about the health metrics and to make a decision on that. So I'm thinking that, and is there, so is there anyone on staff that was going to present on the health matrix at all? And, Dr. Birdsong?
Again, as I just stated, Dr. Gibson was prepared to speak to that, and it may be helpful if we did go through the plan, because I think a lot of the questions may be answered.
For you, as, go through the plan as originally, as we're originally put together?
Just to be fair to the Board, and I know this is such an important decision, and we've got to take some action today. But the administration has been very thoughtful about this process, and I would certainly like, you know, for the team to be given an opportunity to share the information that you requested, that we worked very diligently to put together and to present to you today.
I understand. Okay, so we'll just go ahead with the presentation as planned. And then we will, and then, Dr. Gabriel, I'd like to hear your comments as well. So, Ms. Basin, would you like to go ahead and ask your question, and then we'll go to Ms. Smith?
And that was in both a intention to keep Dr. Gabriel from making her comment.
No, no, I'm prepared to jump in whenever it is ready, and I completely understand wanting to follow the pace of the program. But I am prepared when, when- But I am prepared when, when ready.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if, if I may, if, if we're not taking discussion in either way, can we just get through the presentation and then make notes so that we can at least have a bigger picture? This breaking up just kind of throws me off. I like to see big picture and then kind of come back if we could.
The way we've done it, we've been doing it is we've allowed a couple of questions.
I know, and I, and I haven't liked that, but I'm making a personal request.
Okay, Ms. Bessine?
Yeah, um, in this case, I would, I would concur with Mr. Clanton that if we could quickly get through, I don't think we need to rehash all the information from meeting staff. But I do think we need to get through it, because we need to be able to integrate all the pieces and have a, you know, productive discussion other than in this piecemeal kind of fashion. So I, I would agree with that. And, and we'll withhold my question until we get through it.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad we're all in agreement. And so without opposition, we'll go ahead to the next presentation.
Okay. Thank you. And now turn over to Dr. Cataldo.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Paul. Good evening, Madam Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, members of the board. Tonight, I will be discussing data on how many virtual scholar academy students and non-virtual scholar academy students, there are per level, and information also on the live learning with cameras. As you can see in this slide, the number of VSA and non-VSA students and the number of teachers per level, elementary, middle and high school, there's a complete breakdown by school and house that has been provided in a separate data upload, I think that you all received earlier. Within, if you look back at that slide, you'll see that we have total number of VSA and non-VSA students and the total number of our teachers as well down below. And the next slide, here we have some additional information on live learning with the cameras. These are Logitech webcams. Basically, it's a web conferencing camera with built-in dual stereo microphone speakers, automatic focus, can be moved to any location and position, positioned in any direction. This camera will not follow a teacher, but can be placed in many locations where the instruction is taking place. We've ordered enough cameras for all of our teachers, and on Monday, the first sixteen hundred web cameras arrived. We are expecting the rest of the cameras by early next week. These cameras have already been given out to the ITRTs and also some select teachers that are currently teaching from their classrooms to allow them to use the camera and determine the best way of using that for instruction. That concludes my part of the presentation. And I would like to either entertain questions or hand that off to Dr. Gibson.
We'll proceed with Dr. Gibson.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Martin. Good evening, School Board Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong and school board members. This evening, I will share transmission risks in schools by learning modalities, considerations for childcare services and updates on our nursing staff. Learning modalities in this presentation refers to what schools will look like based on actions and activities within the schools being categorized as lowest risk, lower risk, moderate risk, higher risk or highest risk. We are currently on a full virtual learning platform. Our threshold at this time for risk and disease transmission is at the lowest level of risk. As you consider opening school for face-to-face instruction, we have to be mindful that regardless of what the indicators determine, the more students or staff in the given setting come together, and the longer that they interact, the higher the risk of spreading COVID nineteen. In general, the risk of COVID nineteen spread in schools increases across the continuum of virtual hybrid to in-person learning with the risk moderated for hybrid and in-person learning based upon the range of the mitigation strategies put in place and the extent they are correctly and consistently followed. This stratification from the CDC's considerations attempts to characterize the risk of spread among students, teachers and staff across the continuum. The chart posted, which was previously shared during our last presentation, shows the core indicators. This is the first part of the chart, and it, and it includes the number of new cases per one hundred thousand persons within the last fourteen days, the percentage of positive cases within the last fourteen days, and the school's ability to implement the five key mitigation strategies. As I review and share this evening, I will point out how the instructional modalities framed within the context of the core indicators and their respective percentages and schools' abilities to implement the mitigation strategies can show how schools will operate along a continuum across the categories of lowest, lower, moderate, higher or highest risk of transmission. Next slide, please. The second part of the chart includes a set of secondary indicators. Transmission risk in schools by learning modalities for secondary indicators lists the percentages of change in new cases within the last seven days, the percentage of hospital beds that are occupied, the percentage of inpatient beds within the community that are occupied by COVID nineteen patients, and the existence of community outbreak. These indicators are also characterized as lowest, lower, moderate, higher or highest risk. As we apply the information from the charts on the previous slides to Norfolk in the eastern region, we can see that our transmission risk in our schools by learning modalities varies from lowest risk for some indicators to higher risk in other indicators. The data posted in the chart above was posted, was taken on October sixteenth. In Norfolk, the number of new cases per one hundred thousand persons within the last fourteen days on the sixteenth of October was one hundred point four, which places us in the higher risk category. The regional metric also places us in the higher risk zone. For the percentage of, for the percentage, percentage of positive cases in the last fourteen days, our local and regional percentage was at a lower risk of four point four percent. The percentage of hospital inpatient beds in Norfolk in the region was in the lowest risk range at seventy-three point three percent and seventy-two point six percent respectively. And reviewing our risk level and the percentage of intensive care unit beds within the community that were occupied, we were at a higher risk. As of today, if you looked at the charts on the MPS website under the metrics, you would see that the number of new cases per one hundred persons within the last fourteen days is one hundred point two, which places us in the higher risk category. The regional metric of eight point two also places us in the higher risk zone. For the percentage of positive cases in the last fourteen days, our local percentage is four point one, and the regional percentage is four point five. Both of these ratings are in the lower risk ranges. The percentage of hospital inpatient beds in Norfolk in the region were both at the lowest risk range of seventy-one point seven. In reviewing our risk levels of a percentage of intensive care unit beds within the community that were occupied, we're at a one point three with a high threshold being identified as three point five. In your examination of the spread of COVID nineteen at the beginning of the school year, you determined that the best course of action for our schools was to begin the year on the lowest risk level where we engaged in virtual-only classes, activities and events. As we approach the second grading period and the determination of whether to reopen school for face-to-face instruction is at hand, I will share three sets of slides with you so that you can consider what school will look like if we return to face-to-face instruction and begin to provide instruction on the continuum of virtual and in-person learning. This blended model of virtual and in-person learning will move our risk level from lower list levels in some situations to higher risk levels in other situations. This slide shows what school will look like on a lower list risk level. If we return to school at fifty percent capacity, our students and staff will have smaller classes, activities and events. In the lower risk categories, schools and classroom settings will have core groups where students will remain together all day. Teachers and students will not share objects, and all mitigation strategies will be followed. If these strategies can be consistently implemented, the students and staff will be in the lower risk category for hybrid and in-person learning based on the range of mitigation strategies put in place and the extent they are, they are correctly and consistently followed. Strict adherence to the practices above will not guarantee non-transmission of COVID nineteen, but the practices will place us in the lower risk category. This slide shows what schools will look like in the moderate risk level. If you decide to reopen schools with the proposed hybrid model, our range of transmission risk in our schools will include, for most school sites, the moderate risk category, because some schools will be able to keep students with one teacher all day. But other school settings will require students to share objects on a minimal level and to transition to the cafeteria for lunch, where they will be around larger numbers of students. This will place students and staff on the moderate level of risk transmission. There may also be some mixing of groups during lunch, where students transition in the halls or go to and from lunch. Students will also mix in groups during class changes and during bus transportation routes. All key five mitigation strategies will be implemented within the school setting, and physical distancing will be enforced on our schools. The two sets of categories listed on this slide show learning modalities where staff and students attend school in settings that are higher or highest risk of exposure and possible transmission. Within these levels, students will share supplies and, and or items on an unlimited basis. Students will freely mix with other groups of students, and school administrators will have to address non-compliance and enforcing the primary mitigation strategies. This, thus, as you examine the transmission risk in our schools and consider what schools will look like if we return to school for face-to-face learning, the information presented can help guide your decision and help you be mindful of how the risk levels may impact students and staff. In your questions from our last meeting, you requested updates on childcare provisions to support families should you decide to open for face-to-face learning. At the beginning of the school year, we were able to work with the Boys and Girls Club of Southeast Virginia, Champions Southside Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA to open full-time daycare services for our families at twelve of our school sites. We are excited to be able to continue these school day programs once school opens and are glad that before and after-school services will also be provided to families. Providers contract services on a subsidized pay scale. And while we have roughness program with the waiting list and the Southside STEM program completely filled, the other sites do have openings. Currently, we have two hundred seventy-one children enrolled in full-time daycare and five hundred ninety-six openings throughout the city schools that are available should others desire to enroll. Principals have provided space in their buildings to continue to accommodate these services. If students should return to school for face-to-face instruction, the daycare providers have agreed to continue to serve the students on their asynchronous states. Adjustments and costs will be provided by the daycare providers. An informational document about childcare, childcare services was also posted on board docs. Beginning in November, the YWCA is planning to provide full day and before and after care as well. When this program begins, we will have a total of sixteen school sites that accommodate daycare provider services for our students and families. You also posed questions about our school's nursing services. Currently, our nursing department is fully staffed with a total of fifty nurses. If a nurse is absent, there is a part-time nurse who covers. Our nurse supervisor coordinates assigning nurses should an absence occur. If a nurse cannot be assigned during an absence, each building has trained backup staff, which includes office professionals and administrators to dispense medication. Thanks so much for your time and attention. And at this time, I will turn over the presentation to Mr. Fraley, who will share how our school buses and buildings are being prepared for face-to-face instruction. Mr. Fraley?
Good evening, Chair Martin, Vice Chair Jordan, Dr. Birdsong, members of the school board. Today's presentation will be focused on how we incorporated the five mitigation strategies into our daily operations. I will begin with respiratory etiquette, wearing a mask. So the requirements for wearing a mask. Wearing a mask will be a requirement when it is developmentally, developmentally appropriate. All students riding the school bus will be required to wear a mask at the bus stop and while they ride the bus again when it is developmentally appropriate. All students will be required to wear a mask throughout the school. All students will enter the cafeteria with a mask. They will remove the mask during the consumption of their meal, where, while they are socially distanced at cafeteria tables or in alternate eating locations. Next slide, requirements for social distancing. Seating will be arranged on our school buses to alternate aisle and window seating. Every other seat, windows and ceiling vents will be open. Students will need to dress accordingly. Hallways are being marked with floor stamps or wall stamps to demonstrate six-foot distancing. Cafeteria tables are being set up to ensure six-foot spacing using vinyl cleanable stickers on the seats. And our classrooms are being set up with a six-foot distance between each student desk. Next slide, hand washing. Sanitizing stations have been installed at the main entrance, main office, cafeteria serving lines, gymnasiums and at elevator access areas. We will also have hand sanitizer in classrooms. Soap water and paper towels will be in each student bathroom. It is important to note that each school has ample stock on hand for hand soap, hand sanitizer and roll towels. Our central warehouse has a large backup supply of each on hand for redistribution. Signage will be placed at each restroom encouraging hand washing. Next slide is procedures for cleaning and disinfecting. Buses will be sprayed with a germicide after each drop-off and thoroughly cleaned at the end of each day. Classroom desks will be sanitized with alcohol wipes after each class ends and before the next class is seated. In the cafeteria, tables will be sanitized with a germicide after each meal shift. Bathrooms will be sanitized throughout the school day by our custodial staff. And after all students and staff leave the building, custodial staff will use the three sixty Coroc machine and the Ryobi machine to sanitize the entire building. Next slide is contact tracing. Please know, contact tracing is conducted under the guidelines of and in collaboration with colleagues of Norfolk Department of Health. We work directly with the Norfolk Department of Health to investigate and resolve all incidences. We have the specifics of our health mitigation plan posted on our website. Building sanitations are determined from the outcomes of our investigations. Building access is not permitted while we sanitize in, in either of the affected areas, in either of the affected areas. We sanitize specific areas in isolated incidents and we sanitize entire building if the need arises. Buildings are returned to normal operations once sanitation is complete. Our last slide is building readiness checks for in-person instruction. We have created a redundant system of reviews for building readiness checks. They include custodians, school plant tradesmen, nutrition service supervisors, building administrators and central administrators. And that concludes my presentation. The seat.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley and everyone for your presentation. Okay, so we'll go through discussion. I was just looking at the time. We have about forty minutes. So, uh, can I see some hands? Dr. Gabriel?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Martin. And to my colleagues, I just want to say that I really appreciate all of the efforts that everyone has made to work collaboratively, um, asking questions, getting information from Dr. Birdsong and her team so that we can come together and have some definitive direction after we leave today's meeting. So, if, what I would like to do is I would like to make a motion to begin with the health metrics. I move that the MPS board accept the CDC indicators for dynamic decision-making that includes the primary and the secondary indicators. Furthermore, MPS reopening guidance, guiding health metrics will include only the lower risk of transmission in schools and the lowest risk transmission in schools as indicated by the colors green and dark green for both the primary and secondary indicators. This clear identification of health metrics will inform decision-making for any impression instruction that will occur.
Second.
Okay, I want to open this up for discussion. Ms. Bessine?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to understand the motion. So are you, are you making a motion that we only consider returning any subgroup of students to school only when it is in the lower, lowest risk categories for case, new case incidence and percent positivity?
Yes, Ms. Bessine, that's, that's what I'm saying. And, and I came to that conclusion just based off of the information that Dr. Lindsay had shared with us about Norfolk's risk factors and the sense of just trying to keep the disease burden low within our community. But that's what, that is what the motion is saying, and I'm very happy to hear any suggestions or comments from any of my colleagues. And I'm very happy to hear any suggestions or comments from any of my colleagues.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I want to understand what we're saying here. So the green is saying students and teachers engage in virtual classes only, activities, and events. Is that what you're proposing, Dr. Gabriel?
Well, Ms. Smith, I think that's a good question. What this is saying is that we would only have in-person instruction if the primary indicators and the secondary indicators are in the lower risk transmission or in the lowest risk transition. So we're not talking about the, we're not, the, the green doesn't necessarily say virtual. It just gives the division the go-ahead to say if we are in the green zones, then in-person instruction can proceed. We feel that it is safe at that point.
Okay. I'm seeing the lower risk and not the lowest risk.
I'm, I'm saying I'm, I'm comfortable with both of the greens. The, the regular, I, I'm calling it just regular green is the lower risk and then the dark green is the lowest risk. I'm comfortable with both.
Okay.
Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Campson? And then Mr. Clayton?
And so going against both the CDC and VDH's guidance for schools, is that what you're suggesting that we don't consider bringing in any groups of students who may be at need or, or have academic need to be in the classroom?
Well, you know, it's, it's very difficult to weigh the risks and the benefits. And I can certainly understand bringing students in. But I think that in looking at the health risks, as long as we're in the green category, that's where I feel the most comfortable with bringing students in for instruction. You know, I'm, I'm very happy to hear, you know, if there's other suggestions for, you know, individual groups. But for right now, as a whole, I'm very comfortable with the lower and the lowest-risk categories before we bring students in because it's not just the students, it's also the staff that we're also thinking about. And that's where I'm having to just pull in the, you know, the, my, my thoughts on why I would support the green zones.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm actually processing after our conversation yesterday. I'm, I'm a little taken aback, but I will defer to, you know, my other colleagues to ask their questions. But I will likely, if you can come back to me before discussion closes, that would be great.
Okay, Ms. Campson, Mr. Clayton, and then Mr. Jordan?
Thank you. The reason I'm so excited, excited is the word, but happy that Dr. Gabriel has this proposal is however we decide to go, and that's certainly a discussion for the members to have. And it's the discussion I wanted because I feel like it's important if we, as a board, say to our parents, these are the, the criteria for starting in-personal, that we're ready to start if we're here. And if we're not, if we're in the higher risk and the riskiest categories, we're not willing to risk the children and our staff members, our teachers, because we feel it's too dangerous. Whatever, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying it has to be one or the other. I support the all green. But I know other people have different opinions and that's the whole point of bringing this discussion up. But I feel like it lays the foundation for all the other decisions that we have to make about how we're phasing them in. We need to know before we start pressing the button on dates. I have a preference of what I would like to do in November, which is to get special needs children and ELL children in. But it may be that it's not safe at that particular point in time, even though that's what I would like to do. So that's what I would like. I'd like to have a place that I can go and our parents can go. And they know, they, they look and they say green, 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 green. And if it says green, green, yellow, green, then that would take it off. Or if we have a different cutoff, then we may consider situations where there's something in yellow. But it's just gives us the foundation so that parents know, that's what I think our parents are asking for. Tell us what the plan is and why you do it. And here we're giving them the health rubrics or metrics that tell them why we are making a decision to hit the start button for in-person based on whatever phasing in that the, the board decides. And it lets them know so that they're not waiting around and they're not understanding why we're making a decision. So thank you, Dr. Gabriel. I, I'm really excited that we're doing this and that everyone's having a chance to discuss it and we can come together as a board and decide what's the criteria to open our schools to person-to-person. And then we'll be able to decide when to push the go button. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Ms. Campson. I have the lineup as far as I'm seeing hands as follows. Mr. Clayton, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Bassin, and Ms. Smith. Go ahead, Mr. Clayton.
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin. A second motion in regards to the CDC indicators, the green and dark green, because of what I've been consistently saying. I announced back in September that I adopted, I've been putting forth the Restart SMART, the National Urban League, put forth because of the highest risk group. When Dr. Lindsay came in, that's particularly our staff members and our students of color. I've been really stressing this. And so when I look at this and I look at the health metrics, in particular with the green, to me, that shows that we're five percent or less in positivity. And I think that that's a good thing to look at. Dr. Lindsay also stressed to us that we don't need to just look at Norfolk. And that's why we're looking regional numbers, because not all of our staff members and everyone who works in Norfolk Public School Buildings are in the city of Norfolk. So when I start looking at these higher risk, I want us to be able to have clear, and I know that some people will refer to other school divisions. They will look at Virginia Beach and they'll talk about Chesapeake. But to be frank, that's apples compared to oranges. We are an urban school division. I mean, and those are suburban school divisions. And so there's different things in, in background. And I've heard from several of my constituents, heard from some of our teachers, when it comes down to the fact of looking at the type of households and, and just some of the struggles at the level where many of our citizens and our students are starting at, they're already starting at a disadvantage. And so I can't support anything that will put yellow, orange, or red because to me that creates a higher risk and we're opening the floodgates. So if we're able to keep things lower in, in the green, that shows me that, you know, and to parents and to others that we are, that, that we're staying focused. And I'll just leave it this. I know that many of us have definitely dealt with this and have been, and talking about this, going back and forth, and I've listened to a lot of things. I haven't even shared with my, my colleagues here today, but this hit home today for me. I literally left my office because we got notification because we had an exposure. So when, and now I've got to work from home. I had been working in my office literally every day since this whole thing has been going on. So I'm really sensitive about this. I've been saying sensitive about this. But I just think that we have to do what's in right. And I've said it from the beginning, that the health and safety and the well-being of our students and our teachers and it's, it's the same thing in the respect that we say that a child can't learn if they're hungry. Well, a child can't learn if they're sick. A teacher can't teach if they're sick. A staff member can't work if they're sick. And so I think that if we stay within that green category, I think that at a fair level feel that we're putting those higher risk for our demographic in the forefront and ensuring that health and safety comes first. Thank you, Dr. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton and Mr. Jordan. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I have a couple of things initially. One, I'd just like to see if we could have Dr. Birdsong kind of just restate for us what the administration's recommendation was around this and any thoughts that she has on what's been proposed. And then I have a question for Dr. Gabriel based upon the recommendation that, that you've put forward. Do you know how many days since school has started we've been at the green, green category? So first for, for Dr. Birdsong and her, her feedback, please.
So you want me to go first, Mr. Jordan?
If you would, please.
Yeah, so I, I think, as I stated during, during my opening comments, this is, I know this is a very challenging decision for the board. I know you have constituents on both sides of the issue. But at the end of the day, I, we must keep safety as our number one priority for our students, our teachers, administrators, and staff, period, at the end of the day. We had Dr. Demetria Lindsay to come out to provide you some information relative to the CDC's recommendations, the VDH's recommendations. And my recommendation to the board has always been to follow the CDC indicators for dynamic school decision-making, which Dr. Gabriel did speak to. So I, I again strongly suggest that you review this information and determine the board as a whole, the level of risk that you're willing to take as a board to bring children back into the school buildings. So that would be my continued recommendation to the board.
Right, based upon where we are now in the recommendations of your phase-in, can you just, I'm just trying to understand, are you saying that you think that we are ready for the phase-in based upon what's been presented or we are not ready?
Ready in terms operationally, certainly.
Based upon the, the, the health measure discussion that we're having now?
Again, I cannot make that decision for the board in terms of what risk level you're willing to take. I, I think it's pretty clear where we are right now in terms of the core indicators and the secondary indicators. There are many in the lowest, then lower risk. But we also have in terms of a primary indicator or a core indicator, we're at, at the orange level with that or the higher risk. The board will need to determine if, if you're willing to bring children, no matter what groups they're in. Certainly as an educator, and I said, I've said this from day one, our children learn best when we provide them in-person instruction. But we need to be able to do so when we are assured that the environment, that we can do so safely, that we can bring them back in safely.
All right, thank you. And then, Dr. Gabriel, do you have any idea how many days since the start of school we've been in the, I guess, the category as you, as you're proposing?
Well, I think that what we have, I think we've been mostly green since the start of school for the primary indicators. And one of the indicators is, you know, the ability to have the five mitigation strategies. And this, this does go back to the conversation that I had, you know, with Ms. Bassin earlier that, you know, I trust that Dr. Birdsong and her staff when they say they're going to be able to implement the mitigation strategies as expressed by the CDC, that she'll be able to do that. But I believe that we have, we've had some dips into the moderate risk. But for the most part, I think we've been in the green zone.
So just so I'm understanding the, the motion then. So when we were having the discussion back in July and we agreed to do nine weeks virtual only, part of reason at that time is because we were concerned about the indicators as they were at the time in, in July. So then during the September timeframe, I think I'm understanding that we went to a green, green level. But because we agreed to do a nine-week virtual only, we did not do any in-person instruction. So with the motion that you're putting forward, can you just clarify for me, is this something that would be evaluated over some fourteen-day period, is over a nine-week period? I'm just trying to, it would have been helpful to me, like to have the motion Friday and could have digested it. But in the sense of the way that it, that you've brought it forward, I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, what does that mean for us in terms of moving forward and being able to gauge what the indicators are and then what the actions of the administration would be operationally based upon those indicators?
Sure. So foundationally, I think that it's important for our school division to be very clear on what the health metrics are in order to move forward with any type of in-person instruction. And this will help to decrease any confusion with administration, with parents. They can easily know that if we're, as long as we're in the green, green zone, that it gives us the, you know, theoretical green light for in-person instruction. If that is the, if that is the direction that the board wants to go in. But I'm, what I'm doing is I'm, I'm kind of, I'm not speaking to what we're going to do as far as the in-person instruction plan. What I'm saying is I feel comfortable allowing staff and students to come into the building as long as our region and as long as our, and Norfolk is both in the lower risk and the lowest risk zones. That's where I am coming from. And if we want to go back and evaluate that on a quarterly basis, that's fine. I think that when we try to evaluate things, you know, by two weeks or three weeks, it, it will cause a lot of confusion and angst on both for us as board members and both for the administrative team. But I think that, you know, I would just say that period, as long as we're in the lower risk or the lowest risk, that's what I would be comfortable with in sending anybody back. Because it does change the fact that if you get COVID, you know, what are the outcomes of it? It's not going to change. What it's basically telling us is that if we're going to be bringing students and staff back, we're trying to start off with the lowest risk possible so that we can have consistent type of instruction, whether if that's in-person, which is what this is, in-person as possible.
Thank you.
I'd like to provide Mr. Jordan some more information. Mr. Jordan, I, I'm looking at the data that you asked for and, and I'm, I'm just going to share it with you briefly because we have been following this as it relates to the primary indicator for new cases. You asked the question about, you know, the level that we've been in over quite some time. And so we can, I'm looking back to like May, March the twentieth. We started off in the green zone. But soon after that, it, you know, it was yellow for a few weeks, then orange or at the higher risk. And we've been at that level for quite some time. And then in July, as Dr. Lindsay explained to us, there was that spike in July for a variety of reasons. So from like the weeks of July tenth until August twenty-first, we were in the highest red or the highest risk level in the red. And then we've been in the higher risk of transmission in schools since the week of August the twenty-eighth, if, if that helps. Is that helpful? You asked about, yeah. So that's a primary indicator and kind of all over the place from March twentieth until Sept- September the eleventh. Just, you know, red, orange, yellow, back and forth, and pretty consistent in the lower, not the lowest, but the lowest risk, lower risk category for percent positivity within fourteen days.
And, and I'll just say this as well, that while I think that the school division could, can have confidence with, you know, looking at a yellow zone, I'm not comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with having staff or students in a building if our region is in the moderate zone because of how it can quickly turn into an orange zone. And then we're going to have to be pulling back in-person instruction. So I feel like the, the most safe and the most consistent area for us to be in for Norfolk would be that green zone.
What I'm hearing is be conservative and be consistent is what we're trying to do here. And also, the, I have a couple of notes here. Because if, if we start opening the schools, then we start adding to the problem in some, you know, in some way by sending a message that, you know, we're, we're opening up. And that's not necessarily the message, you know, that we want to send to the entire community. Of course, we want to maybe, if opening up means putting children in schools that's in a controlled environment according to these indicators. So, um, so I, I understand, that's how I'm understanding you. So go ahead. So next I have Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Smith.
Yeah, so this is just kind of taking me, taking me back to, and Dr. Martin, you probably remember me requesting last, at the last meeting, if we could please start with the health metrics portion of the presentation. And, you know, at the time, that was declined to just move forward with the presentation as, as provided and planned. And interestingly enough, had we, had we had that conversation last time and had, had we received the information of, you know, the continuum of learning by, by health metrics two months ago when I first asked it, because there really hasn't been very much changed about it, we probably wouldn't have put the administration in a tailspin that we've had requesting data regarding the operational aspects of opening up right now. So I think that's unfortunate. However, the present- Um, however, the presentation that's been provided, you know, is, is lacking a, a lot of logistical considerations such as tra- the transportation plan, the staffing plan, the funding, the facilities. There's a lot of things that are lacking here that we haven't been, uh, provided, uh, to, to give me confidence and the public confidence, uh, that we can bring students back. Um, but worries, what worries me a lot, um, you know, and, and still, you know, going back to the health metrics, you know, I asked the, the learning scenarios by health metrics. What's been provided in the presentation we have today is the continuum of risk and what the learning activities are according to that continuum of risk rather than the continuum of learning. And that is what I was trying to get at. And I spent a considerable amount of time over the last, uh, week, you know, in the absence of receiving this information despite having asked for it multiple, on multiple occasions. I, I provided, um, you know, a matrix for my board colleagues to consider and, uh, shared that with all of you and discussed it with most of you. Um, and, you know, yes, as you will see in that, in that matrix, uh, based on the science um, and based on what we know about tr- uh, transmission and infectivity among children, um, while balancing, uh, the safety and health of our staff. Um, yes, there, there was some level of risk to be taken that, or that is indicated in the chart that I provided you. But I'll tell you, I'm also thinking about the public health impact of our students not being in a school building. And, and trust me, there will be, there is a public health impact to our students not being in the school building, um, not getting consistent in-person instruction. There is a public health, uh, educational attainment is one of the most, uh, top, uh, uh, risk factors for health. And so we know that we do have to keep a close eye on it. We have students that are currently not engaged, that virtual learning is not working for them. We have students with IEPs who require in-person, uh, services who are right now. Um, I've gotten calls from parents, uh, who have expressed, uh, regression in behavior and skills. Um, and that will have detrimental impacts on their learning as well. So I think we do have to certainly keep in mind the health conditions. But I do think that we have to consider the needs of the student and keep the student at the center of everything that we are doing and the decisions that we are making. And so I'm urging us to keep an open mind. Yes, we want to take the lowest risk possible, but I think we have to keep an open mind that if there are students that we know are in critical need, we have to consider being able, uh, to bring them back into the school building. And so, um, that is, uh, I will leave that, I'll, I'll leave that there. And, uh, open it, I think Ms. Smith had, um, a question after me.
Real quick though, um, I, I would like to say that I think, you know, identifying what our metrics are, what our, what our, um, our risk factors are is really a good starting point. Cause I know our community members have been asking for that. And then we can move on to also talk about, so what is, you know, which timeline do we expect to, or which transition timeline? Um, and, and who is phased in at that timeline? I think that's a continuation of the, of the discussion that we're having here. Not that we're not going to have that discussion, just for clarification. And, um, so thank you for your comments and Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that not only all of the board members, but everyone watching understands what we're saying. So can, Dr. Birdsong, can we go back to, uh, slot 37? I think this is what I'm understanding, Dr. Gabriel, to say, and I just want to be sure.
I'm sorry.
So, Dr. Gabriel, are you saying that we want to see all five, or is that six? All six of these metrics in the green, we're using that as our measure?
Well, when I, when I put forth the motion, I'm putting forth a starting point. The starting point that I am suggesting is either the light green and the dark green as our starting point before we consider any, uh, any in-person instruction. That's from, that's where I'm coming from.
So we're looking for the Norfolk metric as well as the regional metric to have either light green or dark green in all six of these categories. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So now, Dr. Birdsong, I have another question. Um, there are some teachers who are in the building, buildings, teaching their classes, correct?
Correct. There are some teachers who opted to come back, and I believe there was 25 of them.
25 in total?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And what about other, uh, administrative people or principals and things like that?
Your question is around, I'm sorry, how many of them have, about 100% of our principals are working.
And what about other staff members?
Yes, ma'am. Unless there's a documented reason for him not to be working.
They're also in the buildings?
Yes, some are and some aren't. We're still on a hybrid model staffing plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think a good follow-up question to that would be that if we're not, if we did accept this ma- this motion, then does that, you know, what, what does that mean for the staff that are currently in the building? Because this is showing that we're not in the all-green.
Well, this, the, I mean, the valid, valid point, but this is on dynamic decision-making for in-person instruction. That's what this is setting the foundation for. So whether teachers are in the building, um, this is the actual inter- interaction between the teachers and the students. This is giving the guidance for what that looks like. And again, this is just a point for us to start from. I'm very happy if anybody wants to put forth, you know, hey, I'm comfortable with going in the yellow zone um, for, you know, X indicator, or I'm comfortable in the red zone for X indicator. I don't think anybody would say that, but I'm, I'm happy to hear that. This is just a point for us to start from because we need to start somewhere. And if we don't, you know, we're going to be back in our, in the same position again.
What I like about this though, is it, it's also, you know, for, again, gives a clear, i- if we select this, um, say we're in the greens or whatever we decide on, that, um, that it really holds the entire community accountable. Because we are not, you know, isolated in, in our school district, we are the community. And so if anyone complains that, you know, the metrics are, um, not moving in the direction they want them to, I mean, it's a, it's a shared responsibility and that we are all following these five mitigation strategies so that our schools can be opened and safe, um, for, for learning.
Yes.
So Jordan, I saw your hand up and then Ms. Campson.
Uh, thank you. Dr. Birdsong, I, we, we have some, um, students who are being brought into the building now for assessments, correct?
There is a, yes, there is an option for, for testing for PALS in the building. You are correct.
Oh, under the, are there, uh, any requirements right now from the state or from the division that require, uh, students to come into the building for assessment purposes?
The, the only assessment that I am aware of at this time that would be required would be the kindergarten assessment, the kindergarten readiness assessment. The PALS is optional.
So in terms of, uh, what we're doing right now with assessments and how it relates to the dynamic school decision-making, is there any, uh, any relationship there, um, in terms of the fact that based upon the conditions that we have now? You know, as Dr. Gabriel said, this is just a discussion point. But would, what impact, if any, would, uh, our determination of these metrics have on, uh, any in-person assessments that need to take place?
Well, well, right now, uh, Mr. Jordan, that is, uh, a mandate from the State Department. And, and so, um, I've not had any other guidance outside of, you know, there's some flexibility with the P- the PALS, but not with the kindergarten readiness assessment. So, um, certainly if, if we were still like some other divisions are, are virtual, that would be a discussion that I would certainly have to have with the state superintendent in terms of any type of, of flexibility. But that's been the guidance so far. And I also need to, um, in fact, Ms. Ms. Smith's question, we did start off with about 25. It's my understanding now that that has, um, quadrupled to about 100 teachers opting to come into the building at this time. So I need to make that correction, Ms. Smith.
Yeah. And in, in terms of the motion, I'd just like to say at this point, actually, I share, um, concerns that, that Mr. Clayton has, has mentioned. Uh, I don't think it's any question that, uh, you know, we're, we're a school division that is, you know, 70, 65, 70% African-American. Um, we know from the slides that we saw from Dr. Lindsay, prior to the pandemic, uh, where you live can determine how long you live. And I think that has existed and is rooted in some, uh, structural and institutional practices that need to be uprooted. Pandemic or no pandemic. I also think that the data is showing us that, um, students and families in, uh, some of those same areas also are most likely to benefit from some in-person instruction. So I am one that's willing to look at, um, I don't know if it's yellows, I don't know what the different numbers are. That's, that's really, to be honest with you, outside of any expertise that I have. And I'm looking for those to provide some guidance and support for that. I just think that we're going to have changes, uh, in our conditions daily. I mean, we've, we've known that from, uh, from day one. You know, as you all know, I, I kind of felt like we could have, uh, prototyped and done some things, uh, during the month of September to provide some in-person instruction. I'd, I'd like to see some, some more flexibility around the, the all-green. I'm not sure if we will ever get that just based upon, um, what we've seen thus far. Again, I don't have charts or trends in front of me right now. But, um, I think we may want to consider some type of additional flexibility from the motion that's on the floor so that for those students who need the in-person instruction, um, for, um, those parents that want the in-person instruction. And as Dr. Gabriel said, where we can have confidence that, um, as a team, we can provide the health, safety measures and factors for that. I still feel we have to find some path forward to provide, um, some in-person instruction for some students. And I'm concerned that what's being proposed may be at such a level that, that we won't have the opportunity to do that no matter what phase in, uh, we, we, we discussed. Dr. Martin.
Well, um, I have a list here, I'm sorry. Um, I have Ms. Campson, Ms. Bassin, and then Mr. Clayton.
I'm going to raise a point of order, um, because multiple people have had a chance to speak before, multiple times before we've gone around the cycle. I know you have your list, but I'm just stating that.
Okay. Ms. Campson.
First of all, I, I'm so glad we have this because, and we're having this discussion because we need to have a solid foundation. Once again, I agree with exactly what Ms. Martin said, uh, a few minutes ago about, this is what I'm looking for. I think board members are looking for and what our parents are looking for is tell us what the board is accepting. So we know when we look, I'm certainly, I'm certainly, uh, I'm hoping that Dr. Birdsong, she's, their team, of course, is doing their usual great job of collecting data. And, um, we'll start posting daily what the newspapers stopped doing, what our, how we're doing on the ma- on the, uh, primary rubrics, at least. And, and I'm very impressed with what I'm hearing from Mr. Fraley about the mitigation thing. So I think we're on really a good track there. I also am very interested in what I heard, uh, Mr. Jordan say, because it's kind of how I feel. I feel like we should be all in green, but on the other hand, when I look at our highly vulnerable groups, uh, everyone knows that I was very, um, supportive of getting our special needs students, our students with disabilities that are, uh, self-contained classrooms and our levels one and two, ELL kids, uh, back online, uh, November 4th, with the beginning of the second quarter. And, and they would be able to with this. Um, so it's, it's a very hard decision, I think, that we're all making because we're so concerned about safety, but we're concerned about academics, we're concerned about social and emotional. Um, we have a district that is not like Virginia Beach or Chesapeake, and I think that's been said by someone already. It's more like Portsmouth or Newport News. And we know that it's, our kids are more in danger. So I think that it's a hard, this is going to be a tough decision for all of us. But I like the fact that we're going to take a vote and we're going to decide, and then we're going to be with the board, um, whatever it may be, whether it agrees with each of us or not. And so that's why I think it's so important that Dr. Gabriel got this. And the other thing is I just want to take a second as, because to say why would we need to do this first before we start planning out our, um, plan to start, start person to person? And I really would like to say thank you to Ms. Bassin, because she called me twice. With her, she spent tons of time figuring out what's the best way to group the kids with the most vulnerable academic kids first, and then how to spring the others on based on all the stuff she's spent a lot of time on it. And that's why I want to get this done first so that whenever the colors are right, depending on what the board as a whole decides, then it's ready to go. We don't then have to come back and try and figure out how we're going to start phasing them in because it's already, it'll already be done. And that'll be something I hope we'll be voting on after we finish voting on this, so that these pieces are in place. Parents know, that's what they're saying, tell us what the re-entry plan is. Tell us how you're going to decide on when to start the re-entry plan. So we're going to make some decisions and I'm, I'm soon about voting on this to decide what we need to have in place to start it. And that, and then once we're ready to go, we're going to have, really led by Ms. Bassin, what we're doing because it's very close to what I had planned, what I had in my mind too. So it's kind of, you build on steps, but when we walk away tonight, our parents and, uh, and our parents, our staff and the school board will know exactly what the conditions must be to push the start button. And if we do push the start button, exactly how we're going to start re-entry. It's going to be a re-entry plan that's done and it's there for the year whenever the start button gets pushed. So thank you. And thank you both, uh, Ms. Bassin, really a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Campson.
Yeah, I, I was just going to add, you know, it's not just a matter of, of the, you know, the cases, incidents and percent positivity being green today. It's, it's, it's the stability over time and the time it takes to, to inform parents and staff that we are now moving to in-person. So given that the proposed or optional timeline that has been provided by the administration, um, given that we are two weeks out, we are clearly not in that green. So I'm just trying to think out, do this, this exercise with you that, um, you know, we have to determine how long those metrics will be at that risk level before we make a decision. Um, because there won't be, you know, like I said, that today it's, it's green, so tomorrow we're, we're moving in person. We're not going to be able to make that decision like that. Um, and there has to be some stability around those metrics as well, um, over a certain period of time. Um, so, and given that our first, uh, proposed timeline or the, uh, first phase in is November 4th, which is two weeks from tomorrow, really November 5th, um, we're not, we're, based, based on this, uh, motion, we're not going to be bringing students in on November 4th or 5th. Right? Correct? I mean, I just want to make sure that we're all under.
Yeah.
We're, we're, I mean, it's not a possibility, it is, it is, you know, it's two weeks from tomorrow. I mean, we, we have to be able to, to understand, to understand these metrics is also to understand, uh, what they mean. And that is that we have to also know what, uh, level of stability we want to see in them before we bring students in. And so two weeks from tomorrow, what I'm hearing based on, on this motion is that we will not bring, um, the students in as planned. However, I'm hearing a potential amendment to be, to give the administration flexibility. Is that right? Um, to give administration flexibility?
I haven't heard an amendment. Did anybody make it? I heard an amendment over a second.
Okay. Well, I thought Mr. Jordan was suggesting possible flexibility to allow those that, um, may need or require in-person to give the administration flexibility to do so. Did I misunderstand, misunderstand Mr. Jordan?
I, I didn't, I didn't propose an amendment, I was asking for understanding, clarification. I didn't, I didn't propose an amendment, I was asking for understanding, clarification, you know, I'm you know, again, I'm used to work workshops and work sessions being informational. I don't know why the, I don't, anyway.
Okay.
But but any event, I did not offer a a motion, an amendment.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Clayton, thank you for your patience. Go ahead and then Ms. Smith.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Martin. Uh, first, let me just back up here and address a couple of things. The metrics that we're even watching on the screen here says fourteen days. Well, I think that answers your question there, Ms. Bassin, that we're looking for fourteen days um within that area um for us to make that determination. I've been going back to what Mr. Jordan was stating, uh, I don't think that we're looking at not whether or not we start school, I think we're trying to just say, starting school safe, um, and making sure that there is something that we've determined. This is the benchmark that we're looking for, and I understand what Ms. Bassin is saying, that based on this here now, um, based on the numbers that we've seen, that maybe two weeks from now, we're not, we're not prepared to go. But I also would like to just time in the respect of what was also stated, and that is presenting parents on this uh on the seesaw. My greatest fear is unleashing and opening the gates and telling parents is prepared, now it's time to start sending your kids back to school based on a timeline, when everything else is telling us around the country is showing an upward trajectory and positivity rates around the country, and then we have been knee-jerk and pull it back, and then parents are back placed in another hardship, and that is trying to find uh, you know, trying to find care, trying to find all these things, and they've adjusted things. We're moving into, and all the scientists, the science is telling us that we are going to have a really bad winter. We're gonna have a really bad six to eight to twelve mi- uh weeks, there, what I'm hearing. And I, in all accounts, and I want kids to be in school, I agree that the best place for them is face to face. But when we can do it safely? And I don't think that we can do that right now. Now, we've kind of divvied off into the conversation and and about, you know, whether or not we're starting or not, but I really want to get back to the question at hand, which is looking at the green and the light green, which has been placed in the motion for which I seconded to, and I think we've had a lot of discussion, and I think we're almost there. And I hear Mr. Jordan about maybe a recommendation and some flexibility, um, and I'd honestly like to take that up as a second item there, uh, potentially, uh, uh, you know, uh, making that clear to the administration, because we're already doing that right now with some of our CSEP students and others who are getting some hybrid and in-person, um, but it's small numbers, it's not large numbers. And I think that that's some of the uh feedback that we received, that we needed to back it back, because what we uh back it up, because what we got the first time was one week, and then the next week, and and we kind of said, we need to slow this up to kind of see. Uh, but I'm not about making our students, our 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 staff members, or anybody else getting pigs. Um, so when we start talking about risk, yes, I want to take the most moderate thing, because I understand that we have high risk. And so with that, Ms. Martin, I like to call the question, just to kind of see where we are on the original motion that was made. And I, and like I said to Mr. Jordan, I I I agree with your uh motion, your amendment, or uh this thing could be a separate motion about um identifying the administration to have some flexibility, but I like to call the question.
Mr. Clayton, if you don't mind, could we have Ms. Smith ask her question, and then and then have um the vote taken?
A problem.
Okay, Ms. Smith, go ahead.
Oh. I'd like to express some comments or suggestions.
Could you repeat your question? There was some um audio issues.
Yeah, I was asking if it's okay for me to go ahead and offer some input.
Yes, of course.
Yeah, so, and it might be an amendment that um we consider the core indicators that are on slide thirty-five, still dealing with the lowest and lower risk, and possibly um offer a plus one to two uh percentages or changes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, can you repeat that?
Yeah. Where slide thirty-seven, we're looking at both core and secondary indicators, uh, looking for them all to be in the green and light green. Whereas I'm saying or suggesting that we take into consideration the core indicators, still dealing with the green and lighter green, uh, and also include just a plus or minus one or two percent changes. Not the major, kind of small, um.
So we need to be really clear with what we're saying here, then. So, Ms. Smith, are you making an uh uh, would you like to make an amendment that says, keep the primary indicators in the green and dark green zone, but for the secondary indicators, where are you placing those? Are you placing them in the moderate risk and higher risk? Where, I think we need to be very specific here.
Yeah, I'm specific that we use the core indicators only.
Oh, you don't want to use secondary indicators?
No.
Okay. Is there a second for that amendment?
I don't see a second.
That would be three of the two.
No, 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 let's back it up for just a second. So, so, Ms. Smith, if you, um, I'm not looking at the slide, I'm I'm looking at the, so you have, you have your primary indicators. There's three total. There's the number of new cases per one hundred thousand persons within the last fourteen days. Then there's the percentage of the PCR tests that are positive during the last fourteen days. And then the third one is the five mitigation uh uh strategies. So those are your primary indicators, and then you have your secondary indicators, which is things like hospital, right, exactly. And I would just caution, I would caution, because as a healthcare provider, I will tell you, when my ICU beds start filling up, I would get worried, because there is a thirty percent chance that that PCR test is not accurate if it says negative, but yet we're still having people coming in in the ICU, needing oxygen, things like that. And so I would just caution us if we were to adopt not looking at those secondary indicators.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Jordan, I'd like to ask if you'd like to make an amendment to this before we call it to question?
No, I I I just, I I, no.
Okay, Ms. Teener, um, please call the roll.
Madam Chair, may can we just for the thinking for the board, can we restate what the motion is?
Sir, Dr. Gabriel, you have it in front of you, would you please restate the motion?
Yes, give me just a second, okay. Uh, I move that the Norfolk Public School Board accepts the CDC indicators for dynamic decision-making that includes primary and secondary indicators. Furthermore, NPS reopening guiding health metrics will include only the lower risk of transmission in schools and the lowest risk of transmission in schools, as indicated by the colors green and dark green for both the primary and secondary indicators. This clear identification of health metrics will inform decision-making for any in-person instruction that will occur.
Ms. Bassin?
Nay.
Campson?
Yes.
Clayton?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Jordan?
Nay.
Smith?
No.
Martin? Um, hearing it again, I guess I'm just a I'm sorry, I need a point, I need a clarification on this.
Can you read it one more time?
Well, this would mean that the um, any of the student activities that are occurring in our schools currently would be stopped.
No, 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 no. All this is saying is that in order for us to move on to the next step, which is talking about when students are coming back to school for in-person instruction, when, when that happens, this just gives us the foundation for, if we're in the green zone, then we can, we can pursue those discussions, the, that we can give the go-ahead for in-person instruction, if that's what the board decides. But this just lays down what our criteria is.
Because I don't, I don't want the community partnerships and things to go away that are currently
It won't, it won't, because that's operating independent, we're talking about the in-person instruction.
It's making, I'm sorry, I I had a second relapse, so
No, that's fine.
So either I
Okay.
What was the, what was, what was the count on that? I wasn't paying attention.
Four, yes. Three, no.
Okay, the I's have it. So what I'd like to do is, um, we're gonna enter into executive session, but what I'm gonna, we're gonna do then is I'd like to amend the business discussion portion of our um agenda. Where's, I'm trying to find my agenda.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I don't, I don't think we're ready yet to move into the executive portion of the ag- uh agenda respectfully. I think, I think, um, and I, I think I see Dr. Birdsong, um, maybe see, uh, trying to get your attention as well. But um, so I'll, I'll let Dr. Birdsong all speak.
Okay, I was just thinking about the timeline. Dr. Birdsong, would you like to go ahead with the rest of this discussion?
Yes, because it's very pertinent to what you just voted on, so we can um have some clarity for the administration. So what I'm hearing now is that you will be looking at, we will continue to evaluate the co- the core and secondary indicators, and the, the board will consider the return of children for in-person instruction only when these indicators are at the lowest and lower risk. So with that in mind, after we have monitored this, I mean, what is the timeframe? Are you looking at fourteen days of, you know, being in the green, are you looking at twenty-eight? What is the time period? And after we have established the time period for that, then do we need to come back to the board? Because again, you you've got, we've got to plan for this. We can't have fourteen days of being in the lower and the lowest risk category, and then tell a a parent to put their child on the bus. They're gonna need proper notification for all of that, because logistically, there are a lot of things that have to happen. So what I, I think I heard Dr. Gabriel say was that after, you know, a certain amount of time, that the board will decide, then it comes back to the board, and we talk about the stability of the metrics, probably invite Dr. Lindsay back in to provide some context around the metrics, and then have a discussion. Is is that what I'm hearing?
No.
Okay, then y'all need to tell me what it is that I, you know, need around this, because that's what I've heard, that's what's been stated. But I still haven't heard a a definitive timeline around, you know, how many days we should look to to have these indicators in, you know, at at those levels.
I'm seeing, I mean, I, I'm reading it as is on the indicators in the last fourteen days. So
Fourteen days in the lower risk categories, then we bring children back? I mean, that's the, that's the question, we need a specific timeframe around that.
Campson and then Ms. Bassin.
And I, and I need an answer to that, please.
I mean, are there comments? Ms. Campson, do you have a comment?
Well, first of all, once we decide what it is, then the superintendent just follows it, she doesn't have to check you with us. However, one thing that I noticed with the discussion is that there are a lot of people that would like, not a lot, but there are some board members who would like to give a special consideration to some particular groups, such as students with disabilities and maybe ELL kids. And so I would like to make a motion where we give, once we're following the rubric, and we just all was the will of the board, that's what we go with. But based on the discussion I heard, and probably my own personal feelings, to be honest, I would like to, and I don't have it written up nice and fancy, but I would like to make a motion that we do give the superintendent discretion for certain subgroups, which would inclu- which would be basically students with disabilities and the ELL kids, and to 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 make an exception, there is, she so determines that it's, that it's necessary, and that it could be done safely, because those are small groups with their own, the students with disabilities with their own buses. Uh, it it's spread out, some schools don't even have any self-contained groups. Um, I would like to make a motion that we give for the discretion to move ahead with those two particular groups, students with disabilities and the ELL students. If you don't understand English, there's no point sitting in front of a monitor all day. So that's not a good, well-said motion. But that's what I'd like to do. Before we move on, I'd like to have that piece clarified and see what the the will of the board is and making uh, giving the superintendent that discretion, which I know I heard discussed, and and see where we are with it.
When you say ELL, are you, are you speaking about one, levels one, two, and three?
One and two, based on what Dr. Paul said, one and two, and then any particular ones, because three being the marginal one, some kids are at low in that margin, and some are 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 better extended, that would be the, you know, the decision of of the superintendent's staff. But definitely levels one and two, and three at the discretion, I would recommend what Dr. Paul recommended.
And and when you say special education, what, can you
Self-contained. Which were the numbers we saw today, five hundred and forty-five self-contained students, whose parents, if the superintendent chose to to be able to bring those back, their parents would still have the same option of virtual, to continue virtual as any other parents do. But to offer that, because so many of the IAPs, I know they, I'm sure they made revisions to those IAPs, but they were never written for virtual. The children need more assistance. And I know there are a lot of children that need assistance with virtual, but certainly students with disabilities and the ELL, children that speak no English really, really have to get something. So that would, and that's just an amendment I would like to add, and then, you know, then the board can dis- can decide what they choose to do with it.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
I I I'll, I'll second it, but Ms. Campson, if if I may, I think your point is very well taken. Um, and I, and I can, we can definitely open it up for discussion. However, I think we do need to go back to that discussion to provide Dr. Birdsong that guidance of how long does our board feel comfortable with monitoring the, what we have just agreed on, so that way they can plan. And then, and then I think, I think to take up that discussion, your point, I think falls very in line with what the, that next step should be, if you're okay with that.
Yes, I, I mean, I think that that's two motions right there that we need to clarify. I know we have a long schedule and stuff to do, but we cannot leave today without being clear to parents. And so with the motion we just passed, we're still in virtual based on, everybody's in virtual based on rubrics of the health methods. And, but it did seem like there was a lot of interest in the board in doing something for our really high-at-risk kids. And those are the two highest at-risk groups that we have, at least for those to start with, and maybe that could be broadened or, you know, I don't know. But I just think that I would like to have a say in whether or not um those children get get back in to person to person, those particular subgroups. And normally, I would have been pushing the K to three kids too, but I know that I'm I'm not liking that orange stuff that I'm seeing either. But for the self-contained, uh, students with disabilities and levels one and two, and maybe some particular ones from three of the ELL kids.
So let's, so let's do this, Ms. Martin, if if I may, uh, Dr. Martin, if I may, can I lean on Mr. Clayton for just a second for a madam, uh, a matter of parliamentary procedure? There was a motion put on the floor, I have seconded it, but Ms. Campson is okay for us to bring that motion back up later in discussion once we complete what this item is um with regards to the, how long we want to monitor the CDC dynamic indicators for decision-making? How how we procedurally, um, would that be a table, would that be a comeback to, I'm not sure?
You could just do two things, you could either table it without objection, or she can just rescind it, but I think that we want to take it up. So I would just say, table it without objection, and then move on with what you, um, the other item that you want.
Okay.
I, I don't mind tabling it without objection right at the moment, as long as I know we're gonna come back to it before we leave to go into executive session.
And that is what I said earlier, was that, you know, we still need to talk about the phase-in timeline and um indicating uh which students that would be. You get
Well, my motion is for students with disabilities, self-contained, and ELLs, levels one, two, and some threes. That's what my motion was that was seconded.
Right, I understand that. So can we go back to, we're gonna go back to Dr.
Yes.
Birdsong's explanation, um. But first, I'm sorry, Ms. Bassin, did you have a comment?
No, I I just, uh, I just wanted to support Dr. Birdsong's uh question to us, which was, you know, what time, what, and which is what I was saying earlier, when I was talking about stability, I wasn't talking about uh, the, the new case, uh, the new, the case incidence per over fourteen days. I was talking about how long we are uh expected to uh have these metrics at the green or dark green, you know, the the lowest and lower uh risk levels before we start transitioning students. And my recommendation would be fourteen days, um, two weeks to to really see that that trend. And what, as, and I'm gonna repeat what Dr. Lindsay even said uh to our group, is that we're really looking at the trend over time, that we are seeing this decline in in new case incidence and that we are seeing this decline in, in new case incidence and percent positivity. And that's what we want to look for. Um, so with that, I would recommend fourteen days. And so, I, you know.
Make a motion. Make the motion. I'll second it.
Yeah.
Make the motion.
Yeah, I second it.
I move.
Would you like to make the motion?
Go ahead.
Do it.
Do we?
Well, I had to make one up and it was stumbling, so you can do the same thing.
That's, that's how we're gonna keep it moving.
I just want this, yeah, I wanted to keep the act.
I mean, I, yeah, and I, I, well, honestly, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, um.
Madam Chair, I move.
I'm trying to figure out, no, that's, I, I'm not having difficulty coming up with a motion. I'm just having difficulty understanding, I guess, what we are doing. We're trying to come up with, we've made a motion that we are only, we've made a motion, number one, to use the CDC, uh, indicators for dynamic decision-making.
Yes.
We've made a motion that we will only begin to transition when there are, I, I just don't understand why we're making so many motions, rather than having put it into one motion. Um, it, anyway, it, I'm not having, I, I know how to make a motion, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out. And then thinking ahead to, to what, um, because there are still so many pieces that are left. Are we talking about in-person, um, for daily instruction? Are we talking hybrid? Are we talking, I mean, it's like, I, I just feel like we're not getting to the crux of what we need to be talking about. And instead, we're making motions without getting, having like real discussion around these things. So, that's, that's where I, I'm having trouble with that piece of, of this conversation, not the mo- not the making of the motion. Um, so.
Let me, let me just, um, explain some of the methodology here that, that we're going through, is that we're breaking this up into segments, so that, so, um, so that we aren't getting lost in a whole, you know, the bigger conversation, so that we're, we're, we're eventually gonna get to where we're deciding on, so we just decided on, um, on the metric tolerance. Then we're gonna decide on, um, you, the fourteen days. So, like it says right here in the indicators, you, we're gonna monitor, and each fourteen days, we're gonna have a intervention of, okay, so has it decreased to where an opener sets up, you know, more to transition? And then we have a discussion around what, who is transitioning? And so, that would be, that could be a separate motion, like what Ms. Campson put forth. So, it, it is in a sense being piecemeal, but just into, so very specific pieces to the bigger puzzle. So that we.
Yeah. I, I'm just right now with this discussion, I'm, I'm honestly inclined to just say, let's just put a motion on the floor to be virtual until February first, which is quarter three, because right now, this, this discussion has just gotten so far, I don't know, left, um, that, that I think that is just creating more confusion among the board, the administration. I mean, it's, it's just gone in a whole other direction. I, I'm disappointed. But I, I think we need, we need to make a decision tonight. Um, I don't feel that our preparedness as a board and preparedness as a district is where it needs to be to bring students back to the school building. Unfortunately, I think that we should, uh, I, I believe that we should just agree to be virtual. However, unlike the first time that we, uh, decided to be virtual, I think we give the discretion to Dr. Birdsong, to, uh, to, and the administration, to bring students back who are in great need. And that will be up to the administration to decide who and what that looks like, because right now, I've been learning so much about ELL and what ELL would look like. Um, you know, as, as hearing our discussions, so many have reached out to me to say, well, are you saying that we're gonna have them just working with the ELL teacher the whole day? What about their content teachers? Are they gonna come into the building? I mean, there's so many pieces to this that I, as a board member, don't understand, and I'm not gonna pretend to understand, that I think the administration has to have the time to, well, not have the time, I feel like we've had a lot of time. Um, so, but, but to really articulate that to the full board, so that we understand what we're even making a motion on, which right now, I don't think we do. We're just throwing motions left and right. And, and I, I think we just need to, I, I think, I think, you know, I, I, I just, if you wanna make a motion on it, go right ahead. But right now, I'm just, I'm, I'm a bit flabbergasted with this conversation.
So.
Yeah, so Ms. Bassin, I could definitely understand where you're coming from, and I, 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 I hear, I hear you on that. Um, in order to have action, we have to make the motions. And I don't disagree. If you, if, you know, being that we are having this discussion and we're a board that, you know, has a lo- has a lot of thought process into how we, um, are getting the data, receiving the data, asking the questions, I think, you know, which is why I just put forth the motion of the health metrics, which, you know, you had said early on, you know, that's important, that's where we need to start from. But I can also agree, I can also agree with, with what you're saying that says, hey, if you just wanna keep things simple and say virtual until February the fourth, I honestly, that's where I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine to do that. And, um, and if you wanna make the motion to do that, I will gladly, you know, second that motion, and then we, we can have that discussion. That might be, you know, c- clear for the staff and the administration. I just want us to get to the point where we're speaking the language of action, and we can have that good discussion. And then at the end of the day, we take a vote and then we support what that will of the board is. And I know, I, I definitely know that each of us is very, very mindful of, you know, all that is being considered when we make these votes. And I do not take it lightly, I don't think any of us take it lightly, as we have all stated, the educational risks of not having kids in school, of the health risks of having kids in school, the staff, all of that. But make the motion. Go ahead and make it, and, and let's run with it. Let's have that discussion and then let's take some action on it.
I, I honestly don't, I think that if, um, you know, to make the motion, I mean, you make whatever motion you want, but, but it seems to me that with, by establishing the matrix of staying in the greens before we start transitioning into in-person learning, we are in some way saying that we are gonna stay virtual for a while.
Well, yeah.
It, it really seems a little bit redundant, especially because we want to try to get to the greens. I mean, isn't that our goal? We want to get to the greens, so.
And stay green.
We, we've already established that, and if we get there, then we're, we're not gonna phase into in-person. Okay. Um, so, we still need to provide a, the fourteen days? I, I mean, that, that's what I thought we were voting on, because it's, it's, again, as I said, it was listed in the indicators.
Do we have a motion on that?
So, Madam Chair.
I didn't hear the motion being made yet.
Yeah, so just so that, based on everything we're hearing here, I move that the, um, that we instruct the administration to use a fourteen-day, um, I guess was the average, um, to be able to make the determination about, um, you know, regarding the, the CDC's indicators. So, it'll be fourteen days average, that's what you, you make, um, your determination on. Doctor, anything additional you need out of that? Fourteen days average, that would be what you make the determination on, based on the CDC indicators.
Did we, sorry, were, were you asking me, Mr., Mr. Clayton?
No, Mr. Bird.
I was asking Dr. Birdsong.
Oh, okay, sir.
Okay, so, thank you, uh, Mr. Clayton, because I, I, I need some clarity around that. Are you saying fourteen, fourteen consistent days of us being in the lower or lowest-risk categories for core indicators and secondary indicators to determine if we're going to bring in our most, you know, some of our most vulnerable groups? Keeping in mind that you're, you're talking about now bringing back the masses in February? Really, this is very, yes.
Yeah, yeah, we hadn't even, that, Ms. Bassin mentioned about February first. We were talking about the, um, the timeline that you'd use to make your determination on that. I mean, I, I almost at the point want to just say, February first, all virtual. Um, and we continue to plan as to how we're gonna come back in. Um, as a matter of fact, that's what I'm about to say. I move, so I scratched the other one, that we stay virtual till February first. Um, and that the.
The fourth.
February fourth, twenty-twenty-one, and that the, and we instruct the administration to continue to plan for in-person, so we can answer those questions about, you know, fourteen days and all the other stuff. But let's, yeah.
Um. Ms. Bassin had her hand up, and then Ms. Campson.
Yeah, um. I'd like to include in that motion, however, that we leave discretion to bring in groups of students as, uh, as needed and as determined by the administration.
So, this is a friendly amendment. So, what you're stating, I agree with.
Right, okay.
And that'll answer your, um, thing that you had, Ms. Campson, earlier.
Well, my question is, my motion was tabled, and my motion is to, to put a focus on students with disabilities and ELL kids for, um, for the superintendent to determine if they can come in. And I, so how does that fit into this?
We're doing that in this motion now.
I need to push back on that a little bit, be- because again, operationally, as I've mentioned before, the administration will be prepared, either, whatever the, the, the decision is of the board. You cannot place in our laps, again, you, you started off with, you know, making the recommendation around, you know, we're gonna start here or there. You need to make a decision, period. When do you want the children to come back in? If you don't want, if you want children to not start, you know, as a whole until February the fourth, the motion needs to be clear around that. I'm not saying it's not. That motion needs to be clear, you need to vote on it and, and move forward. If you want to bring any group of students back into Norfolk Public Schools, that is your decision. It's not at my discretion. That is the decision of the board. If there's some metrics that you want to, uh, to use around that, I am happy to, um, to oblige you in that. So, this is going all over the place, and, um, I, I think we, you know, we need to be very clear and specific about moving forward. When do you want the children to return? Be clear about the date and the return. And if you want specific groups of children to return, then when do you want those children to be returned? Period.
All right, so should that be a separate motion, or should it be wrapped up, the separate motion that I already put on the floor?
I don't understand why it can't be in one motion, Mrs. Campson, um.
And I'm not disagreeing. That's why I was asking Mr. Clayton, who is our expert on, on, on this. How would, can we work that into it? Because I really do would like to, to look at students with disability, self-contained, and levels one and two, um, ELL kids separately, because of their special, because of the e- extra needs that they have. That was what my motion was addressed to. I put at the superintendent's discretion, and, and so I guess that that, and I understand what she's saying.
Yeah, so, so Ms. Campson, the question with, if we add those other subgroups, then it goes back to the, the issue that Ms. Bassin raised, which is, what's the timeframe?
Okay.
Metrics, what we determine? So, we're, we're already saying it's clear, February fourth, fourth, twenty-twenty-one, all virtual. That's what it is. Now, your, your piece about the ESL students, ELL students, self-contained, um, those subgroups, the superintendent has stated that she doesn't feel that it should be placed on her to make that determination.
Right.
We need to make that determination as a board. And then going back to what Ms. Bassin was stating, we gotta make a determination, based on we've already grow- voted on the, the lower and lowest. What timeframe are we gonna say that this is okay? Because we're not, we gotta give the superintendent clear directions, so that they know what metric and timeframe to look at.
And I understand that. That's why I went to you for what would be the procedure there.
So, I'm just making clear, and at Ms. Bassin, I see your hands up, Ms. Martin, if, uh, and I don't know, Ms. Bassin, if you've got something to add in this particular piece, so that I can clarify this motion. Did you have anything? All right, 'cause I'm fine with the fourteen days. Okay, fourteen days, and I don't, and, and, Noah, what would be the term, if we, it's fourteen days?
I'm sorry, we should see a declining trend over fourteen days.
Decline sort of fourteen days.
Declining or stable trend over fourteen days is that piece. But the other, the other thing, I wanted to speak to the discretion piece of the superintendent, as our expense, the only instructional expert on our governance team, uh, you know, at that, that, is that we, how do, what, what is gonna happen? So, this is my con- the other concern, what is going to happen, um, when we do finally get to a point where we're looking at academic data and we see that the, there are children who are not thriving? Are we, are we willing to say that we're willing to go six months, four months, six months, without even addressing, uh, their needs? Or, I mean, I'm not saying that we are not addressing their needs, but if, if, if it is determined by the instructional experts that their needs will be best met in the classroom, don't you think that the administration or instructional experts should be able to decide that and not us?
Well, I think you.
Because they may be self-contained, or they may be, you know, they may be IP's. They may not fall into any of those categories. They just may be, um, you know, uh, getting left behind for whatever reason. And, you know, I would like to keep, it, you know, all based on health conditions, I would like to keep, um, you know, that door open to, to have the administration come up with a plan. If, if they're saying that they will be ready, whatever we decide to bring students back into the building, I would like the instructional experts that we have hired to, to make that determination and not be on us. I think it should rest where.
Respectfully, Mrs. Bassin, that's what you were voted to do as a board member, to make some of these hard decisions for your constituents. I am the instructional expert, and we have many instructional experts on staff. We have presented information to you. We have given you tons and tons of data to make a decision. We have provided for everything that you need to make this decision and move forward. So, I again respectfully request, for the sake of this conversation, for the sake of the school board and the administration being able to move forward, let's clearly come together. Please make a decision about what you want the learning for, uh, modality to be moving forward, um, for our children. And, and when you want to bring them back in for in-person instruction, please make that very clear. Please make it clear. Now, we provided information about L's, although I've been, you know, I've heard today that we don't have a plan, and that is just not factual. It's also been stated that we don't have a plan for transportation. That is also not factual. There are a lot of things that have been stated tonight that are not factual. The administration for the last couple of months have been coming to you, presenting very clear, specific information to you about what our plans are. So, respectfully, you can't pick and choose when you want me to be the leader. I am the leader of the school division. I have given you information based on lots of study, lots of work with the administration, and I lay it before you again today. Please, please, for the sake of our children, please make a decision, so that we can move forward.
So, Ms. Martin.
Dr. Birdsong, I, Mr. Clayton, I, here's, so here's what I, this is, so we already voted to say that we are not gonna accept transitioning into the, in student, for students to transition into in-person learning and until, with exceptions, until we, our community is at the lowest, is in the greens. So, it just, I think that's a, that's a goal that we all want to get to. And that I would like, I honestly would like that to remain. The, you know, we voted on it, it, it passed, that, I would really like for that to remain. And with the amendment, I, I'm not understanding, you know, I don't want to go through this again in February. I really think it should be a goal of the community to get down to the greens at, over a fourteen-day, you know, we see it a fourteen-day trend, and then we start moving in that direction. And, you know, phasing in, and we determine how we're gonna do that phase in. And, but I also don't want to, to end some of the programs that, you know, are very, taking up very little capacity in our school, that are currently hap- happening in, in our buildings. I don't want that to go away. Um, you know, I just don't want to jeopardize that, 'cause that, I mean, a lot of families are already depending on, on that. But I do also want to phase in, um, students that, like the inclusion students, the clue, the students. But I do also want to phase in, um, students that, like the inclusion students, the students that were included in, in the plan that was presented today. That, that is my, is what I was hoping to accomplish today.
So we are still left with the question, if we do that, based on what Ms. Bassin said, which was decline or stable fourteen-day trend? Cuz that's what's missing in the first half. Cuz we don't have a timeframe to make that determination, how long it has to be at a certain level of being in the green. So are you stating that that's what you want the motion to be?
With, with fourteen days, yes.
Okay.
There's still my motion waiting, though. I don't want my, I don't want my motion tied in with that one.
Yeah, it's on the table.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, um, because we have voted with the matrix in the green, um, I'd like to move that we instruct the administration that the determination will be made for in-person instruction based on a declining or stable fourteen-day trend with, in the lower or lowest, um, CDC indicators that we voted on.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Bassin and Mr. Jordan, I'm sorry, not Ms. Bassin, Dr. Birdson and Mr. Jordan.
And, and this is just a clarifying question. Based on the motion that was just stated, does this mean after fourteen days, starting next week, um, Wendy, or starting tomorrow? And are you talking about in-person instruction for the general population to start within fourteen days? Please, I, I, I'm just, you know, pushing you to be really clear.
I, I understand that, because we haven't even gotten into your
We haven't, yeah.
And, and that's where I really wanted to get to next, um, to talk about what the phase-in plan would even look like. I, I hadn't
Yes.
We haven't even gotten to that.
And, and that may be important, to do that first.
So, um, and you may raise a very good point, because we have to have discussion about these phase-in plans, um, because I've got some concerns about the hybrid and, and why we're even doing that. So, um,
Can I?
Can I, if I will just, let's, can we hear the plans? Cuz I think that they are important, uh, important and pertinent to this particular discussion on this item here in this motion, um, because it will talk about timeframe and who goes where.
Yep. I have a point of clarification.
Sure, Dr. Gabriel, go ahead.
Okay. So this is how I see it. And this is, and for the, for the community watching and for all of us, this is, this, this is the sausage being made, okay? And I'll just put it, put it like that. We basically have two paths that we can go down. We can go down a path where we set a hard and fast date and a hard and fast design of instruction, just like the motion was that, um, Ms. Bassin put, put, put out there, Mr. Clinton put, um, into, into motion, February fourth, virtual until then, or
I didn't put that motion out there, just being
No, 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 I'm saying, but you, you, but, but you said, you said, I'm ready right now to, to, to say February fourth. But, uh, or, or what we could do is we could be a little, um, mobile, and we could say, okay, as long as we're in the green zones, then we're going to, you know, look at in-person instruction. That is more complicated. That requires us to, you know, really dig deep into how we phase in instruction and things like that. So that's like the two questions that we have before us. But I think that, you know, if, if we're willing to take it, take the next step after the, the motion that we had just made, which we passed, which was looking at the lowest and the lower risk indicators, the logical next step would be, then, okay, well, what are the dates that we're looking at? What are the phase-in plans? And I think that's where Ms. Campson was going when she had, when she had made her suggestion. What, what is that going to look like once we have said, okay, the, the groundwork is being laid right now for how we're going to bring, uh, wh- when, where, when it is safe to bring kids back in? So those are the two avenues that we can go down, that, that I can, that I'm hearing from our discussion right now.
Well, we actually, I mean, that's what I was saying about the different motions to keep this actionable as we put this together. Um, but we did already take action
Yes.
On choosing the lowest greens. So we already voted on that. So now just come in and make a motion that we're gonna change that and pick a date, that, that's contradictory in, in my view. I, I'm not seeing, so we've already moved on, on the lowest greens as the matrix indicators. Now, Doc, for clarification, um, see, again, says it right here, for the last fourteen days, I thought that's we're voting on, but for clarification, the trend would be fourteen days. A, so you learn, or
Decline or stable fourteen-day trend.
Right.
Yeah.
Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I just wanna acknowledge I'm, um, I'm not following as well as many of my colleagues may be following, uh, where we are and what it is that we're trying to consider right now in terms of the, the fourteen-day piece. My hope is that at some point, um, I'd just like to get an understanding of, I understand what we're talking about in terms of health metrics and all of that in a big picture. I'd just like to get an understanding of how we are tying this together for, uh, meeting the academic needs of students. And so I'm still trying to, to get there, and I hope we'll get there. Um, Dr. Martin, at one point, I thought you were going to recommend that we continue the discussion during the business meeting. I, I, I think that's a good idea if we, if we need to do that. But I'd just like for, as this conversation goes forward, if you can break it down for someone at my level, uh, what, what we're saying right now in terms of the fourteen-day trends and what that is signaling specifically to Dr. Birdsong. I, I felt that the administration has come forward with recommendations. They came forward with some recommendations today, and I'm just kinda lost as to where we are. So anything that anybody can say to just help me understand what we're specifically about to act upon, so I can vote appropriately, I, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, um. If, if, if I may, if we, since we have just adopted some health metrics, if we layer that with Dr. Birdsong's plan of a November fourth date, if the trend is declining or stable, then theoretically, if we wanted to vote to adopt that plan, we could do that, as long as the health metrics were in the green zone, if we wanted to do that. That's, that's how I'm looking at it. And, and folks jump in, but that's how, if, because she has laid out a plan, she's laid out a plan, she's laid out a, a, a timeline. Um, and so if we wanted to layer that on top of those health metrics, we could theoretically follow that plan.
Yeah. If, if, just so, so in, in the presentation, I thought, I, you know, when the administration did the chart with the teacher with twenty students, you know, I could, I could follow those things. And I may have some questions about it, but I could follow those things. In a, in a simple scenario, explain to me under where we are now, if a, if it's determined that is the academic next interest, uh, for a child to receive some in-person instruction, uh, when is the soonest that could happen? What, 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 what is it that triggers that, is what I'm trying to understand?
What, the in-person? So we have these two, um, proposals, so we'd have to select which proposal we go with. And, um, and so
What are the two proposals you're referring to?
The original proposed timeline, the November fourth, sixteen, thirty, January fourth.
Context of what we're talking about right now in terms of health measures. I, I, I'm kind of following that originally, the administration came forward with something that they asked the board to consider with some dates and some phase in. We took a vote today, and if I understand, the vote that we took said, we won't do any phase in until all green. Is that correct? Now we're having a conversation about fourteen days and trends. So I'm trying to figure out, explain to me what the fourteen-day trend piece, how that connects to the, the earlier decision that was made.
Well, I
It was supposed to be a trigger, but now when it brought up, you, just what you said, Mr. Jordan, there are two proposals that have a date of starting in November. That's why I said, you know what? We should really go and talk about those, whether or not we're gonna start with November fourth. Because really, Ms. Bassin was bringing it up, you, what's the trigger to say that it's a green light to move? What's the timeframe that we're looking at? So we should really start talking about the proposals, whether or not we're gonna go with those, and that really clears it up. And then we can determine if, if, if we don't like them, then we're doing something else. If so, we're going with those. I think that that's the simplest way.
These different ti- these different timelines, they have different groups at, you know, each trigger point. So, so the first, um, fourteen-day decline or stable greens would, um, you know, if it happened by November fourth, it's unlikely. But, um, but whatever date thereafter, we would start phasing in based on whichever, uh, proposed timeline that we adopt, those student groups. That's where we'd, we'd take this conversation. Ms. Campson, go ahead.
The superintendent gave us two options. However, we can't decide on either of those options. And I would like to have the, the board here, Ms. Bassin's, if we get into this discussion, a third one that slows it down a little bit. I would also like us to think in the terms of removing the timeline and focusing on just the re-entry plan. Because right now, I think we all know that the, the timelines on Dr. Birdsong's, very good options, kick in on the fourth. Well, we know that we've already voted a procedure that prevents that from happening because of the, uh, new cases for hundred, hundred thousand indicator. So basically, what we need is to clarify, first of all, the, the, the vote we've already taken, and if we need to add something to it, like my request that we look at these two groups and, and the motion I have tabled at the moment, but would like to call up. And, and then move to what re-entry would look like once we meet the metrics that we've already set. We've already voted on, on what they are. And, and then attach timelines. There's no reason to have a timeline. There's no need for a timeline anymore, because the timeline starts when we push go, because we've met the requirements that we've already voted that are our requirements. That's how I see it. That's, we don't need dates on either of hers. If we take the dates off and we say, is this the best plan, option one? Is this the best plan, option two? Or is it option three, based on the work that Ms. Bassin has done and that I support? Pretty much, I haven't seen her final product yet. But, um, then once we've got that, then we know that when we're ready to push the button, based on the vote we just took, it kicks in, and the ti- and, and then the phasing, or the staggered, um, bringing in of the children kicks in.
Right. There's four phases proposed. The first phase, um, would bring in equity and opportunity students, uh, begin hybrid schedule for special education, self-contained English learners of all levels and all pre-K through three. And it's the same for both first phases.
Right, but it changes as you go down in it, to middle school, I think, to January. But I, to me, it's too rushed, and, and that's why I would like to add the third option, based on Ms. Bassin's work that she's done. But I think we're still ahead of ourselves getting to that, because we haven't finished anything we're doing with our initial work with the health metrics. I know I still have a motion on the floor for that. And then it sounds like there's, and then we have the discussion of possibly having a motion for how to determine that. And, and, and it tells us on the chart, it's based on fourteen days. So that's already in there.
Well, the, the second timeline is not based on fourteen days.
Not the timeline, the motion, the motion that has already carried saying we have to be in those green things, and they both have fourteen days, um, time period. So it has to go fourteen days steady or declining, and then it kicks in. And that would be something the superintendent could monitor. We could certainly put it in a motion. I don't mind that, but we just need to
Which is why I was focusing on which students would come in per phase.
Right, it just seems like first we have to finish the motions that we have that have to do with how to interpret the vote we've already taken, or make any exceptions to it. And then we then go back and look at how we do the staggered return once we've honored what we already voted on, which is our criteria. I mean, we can't put any timelines on anything until it, the go button is pushed, we've met the criteria.
So, Mr. Clinton, would you be willing to resend your motion for February fourth?
Yes, cuz I'm just confused.
Okay, thank you. So now
I don't have a problem with it.
Campson's motion was, I felt a bit premature, because we had, you know, we hadn't really talked about the populations in the timeline. Would you be willing to resend yours until we have that discussion? And then we can accept the proposed phase in altogether?
I'm not clear what you're asking, because I'm not sure how my motion is impacted by that, by, by the phase in. Because I'm taking it outside the phase in for, I'm asking that those two be removed from the phase in and started sooner. Be removed from, uh, the chart and from the phase in. And then plus, I still wanna say that we need to have a third phase in option. But as far, so I think, no, I think my answer is no. I'd like to get a vote on my motion, just to see where we are, and before we get into the discussion of the phase in. And the phase in may have to wait anyway, because of the time. And if we're not starting it on November fourth, which we, doesn't look like we are, we could, that could be the next meeting. But we need to leave this with everything else clear.
Can you restate your motion, please?
All right, I'll try. And I'll, because I need to reword it a little bit anyway. I move that we direct the superintendent to take the two groups, self-contained students with disabilities and ELL students, levels one and two, and implement and, and move them into in-school and face-to-face, person-to-person instruction on November fourth.
And Dr. Gabriel, you seconded that, is that correct?
Sure, I, 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 I can second that motion.
Well, I mean, she restated it, but who, who seconded it the first time?
I think I did, I did.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Toner. Okay. Discussion? Mr. Jordan? And then Ms. Bassin?
You all know I support providing some in-person instruction as safely as possible when we can. But just for clarification, doesn't this motion contradict what we just said we would not do?
Yes. Yeah, I didn't see it that way, because by moving in fifty percent of our population, our capacity level increases, which, um, creates a, a more dangerous environment. Whereas right now, we do still have a very small capacity of students in our buildings. And this being not that many more, I, I still see how we could, so I was just thinking that the, the, um, mitigation strategies and so forth that are being used, being used for all students that are currently in the buildings could, I mean, it, it wouldn't, um, it would still
It does contradict the first
Can I respond, since it's my motion?
Sure.
We don't have self-contained classrooms in all of our schools. I think maybe half of the schools have self-contained, I'm not sure of the exact number, um, maybe twenty-seven or something like that, it was in the mid to higher twenties. So, and there, and there's maybe a couple of classes, maybe a few schools maybe have three, I'm not sure. But it's not a huge influx of kids coming in. It's kids that, more typically than anyone else, except the non-English speaking L, ELL kids, who really can't do virtual. Some of them will, and you won't get all of them, because there's some parents that are afraid to have their kids in school at all, and perfectly understandable. So that's what my motion is in concern, and it's not something that's like this mass of kids coming in. Even if every single one of the parents did, that's five hundred forty-five plus one sixty-eight, and that's under, that's, what, about seven, seven hundred or so? Spread out over a number of schools. There are only nine schools that have ELL kids in it, if I recall correctly from that. And I think there was some discussion during the presentation about having just a few ELL centers. And so it's not a big thing coming into the schools. And it's something that most board, some board members, maybe a majority of the board members will decide not to do. It's just something that I, I personally believe as, as an educator myself, that those children really, really need it. They, I'm, I'm sure, every single IEP for those five hundred forty-five children had to have been revived. They, I'm, I'm sure every single IEP for those 545 children had to have been revised for them to be sitting in an all-virtual situation. Because I know, know, there are no I, IEPs that were written prior to this that had the, uh, self-contained children doing virtual. So it, yes, there's a reason for that.
Yeah.
That's why, at this point, I'd just like to call the motion. Let's see where it flies.
Well, the rea- the reason why I was asking, in, in this camp, you know, I, I share the, the goal. But the reason why I was trying to ask the question when we were having the previous discussion, because now it, it's as though we're saying that we, we took off the table, returning children back to school, under a certain number of certain types or a certain size. We took that off the table. So that's why I was asking the question. When we said that we would only do all green, to me, that takes off the table, any in-person at all. That's why I was asking the question about whether or not we were doing some in-person now and what the state may have been mandating even in terms of assessments. So I was just saying that I thought that we, we've taken that off the table. That the board liked to revisit it, that's fine. But the reason why I thought it was a contradiction is if we've already said you can only do instruction for anybody. If it's all green, then when we come back and start saying, except for these students, that's where I thought that was a contradiction.
And I can understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Jordan. I, I even saw conflict.
Clarification.
And, and to further clarify, um, I, I know it was said that we only had a few, um, ELL students in, in some of the schools. We actually have them in half of the elementary schools, in all of the middle schools, and all of the high schools.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Perhaps that's why the option of having centers for them was brought up. You know, I'm not sure. But either way, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, Mr. Jordan. If, if I were you, I'd probably feel the same. Why is she asking for an exception with these kids? It's, it, it's just something that I feel as an educator, that these particular populations are so least likely to be benefiting from virtual. So, and that's, and so I want it out there. I'd just like to see how it goes. You know, it, it, everyone votes how they vote. But this is something that I want, I would love to see happen. And if it doesn't, it doesn't. Because you're absolutely right. I shouldn't be violating a proposal that I really support and having everything in cream for safety. So this is the one piece I'm taking outside for academics. And that's where I am with it. But I certainly understand exactly what you're saying. I really do. I, I, it, it's, it's hard to, as an educator, I know I'm always academics, academics, academics. But with safety there, and now we're more safety, safety, safety as we should be. This is the one place that I was trying to take a step aside and say, the academic piece is, is, is coming to me. And it is so important for these particular groups.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it, um, a, uh, it's a point of order, but, um, Ms. Campson, you've said this twice. You've made two motions. One of their la- last, um, meeting went this one. You are able to speak first after you make a motion. But please indicate that you are willing, you want to speak first. So I'm just bringing that up because it.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Jordan did put his hand up and you didn't. So that's, that's why, that's why I went to him. Because it, it, it looked to me that you weren't ready to speak. So.
Oh, I'm always ready to speak, Dr. Martin.
I, I know it. So, um, Dr. Gabriel, then Ms. Basim.
Uh, I, I'm gonna yield to Ms. Basim. You can come back to me.
Okay. Ms. Basim, then Ms. Smith?
I, I, I'm honestly, yeah, uh, I, I defer to Ms., uh, fill my time to Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I just want to say I'm not in favor of this exception. If we're gonna start making exceptions, then we need to open the floor to hear what all of us have to say in terms of exceptions. Because there's a group of the student population that I think, uh, benefits more from in-person instruction. And if we're gonna start making exceptions, let's, let's put them all on the table. And it's basically going to null and void what we voted on in the first motion.
Right. Ms. Basim?
The one thing, you know, um, as you know, um, I think we need to let data guide our decision. Uh, I think, and myself included, make a lot of assumptions about some of our subgroups, uh, about what their needs are. And we're just going around in circles right now, trying, uh, for, for us as a board to decide who, who should be the first subgroups to return to the classroom. At some point, hopefully soon, we'll be able to have that discussion about how our students with IEPs are doing, how our students, uh, receiving ELL students are doing. Um, perhaps that would be an opportunity to talk about, they may be doing, they may be thriving in ways that we are assuming they may not be able to thrive. Um, and while other students who aren't classified in those categories are not thriving. So I, I'm also in, in the same, uh, in the same, uh, boat as what Ms. Smith just said, as Ms. Smith, because, you know, I'm apprehensive about making that decision. And based on the motion that was made earlier, I'm not really sure, you know, what it is we're asking the administration to do. There are so many pieces to this. Like, I'm not willing to say, yes, let's bring them in and bring them in for a hybrid model. Because I'm not, I don't support that. You know, so, so, uh, there are so many, there, I, I feel like we keep leaving here with more questions than answers. And, um, I think the one thing that has been decided upon is that the board is not willing to take any risk, uh, you know, to bring students back in. And based on the assumptions that I've heard here, that, you know, with the potential for, for increases uh, in COVID cases and, uh, you know, over the next, you know.
Halloween, Thanksgiving.
The winter holiday, you know, winter break. You know, I, this, this discussion concerns me, um, because, uh, you know, we're, we're going around in circles and, and our students deserve so much better than this. And I feel like, um, we, we've got to make a decision and direct and support the administration to provide uh, a, a learning experience that is meeting the needs of every student and making equity at the core of all of the work that we're doing. And we need to see, uh, you know, a demonstration of that fact. I, I honestly did not come here to say, let's be virtual through, I, I was keeping an open mind to let students in. But right now, my, my confidence i- in us as a board, my confidence, uh, is, is just diminishing the more we keep talking, frankly. Um, and so, uh, you know, that's just, that's just where I am. I think, I think there's, uh, I, I'm just gonna leave it there. And you, yeah, you can, you can move on to the next.
Ms. Campson, go ahead.
I have listened to my colleagues on the board. And, and es- especially, uh, Mr. Jordan, who was, who was very thoughtful in, in what he said. And, um, and, and I, and I have decided that you're right. I was a big supporter of getting this chart approved. Uh, we approved it, and I should not be making exceptions. It breaks my heart to say that, but I think that that throws off the whole thing if I make exceptions. So I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay.
I think, um, Madam Chair, I think what we should do then is, in order to keep the conversation rolling, let's go ahead and discuss the, the plan that has been presented by the administration. Let's see where everybody is on that and go from there.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're going to do. Okay. So, um, so we have two proposed time, we're gonna just call them plans because we're not looking at the time, the dates anymore. Um, you'll see in the first, the, um, reviewing it again, the first phase in is the same. So, any changes?
Can we put these off?
I'm gonna, oh. Sure, I'm looking at slides 30 and 31.
Dr. Martin, I have a couple of questions.
And I don't see, I'm looking at very small font. So there weren't any changes. The only changes were to the timeline, right?
Dates.
Right, to the dates. So, um, any objection to, so, so it's essentially the same. We'll just ignore the dates on here. So, um, without objection, could we go ahead and accept this timeline?
Um, Dr. Martin, I have a question.
Ms. Smith, and then Ms. Campson.
Okay, I have, I have two, two, I have a question and then I have a comment. My question is for Dr. Birdsong, um, Dr. Birdsong. Okay, all right. Dr. Birdsong, could you please share, um, with the board, with the community? I know you've stated it before. Can you please share what the limitations are of the administration, the school division, to offer four-day-a-week in, um, in-person instruction all day? If you could just reiterate that, reiterate that for us and for the benefit of the public, please, that's my question. Then I'll follow up with my comment.
A- absolutely. With the resources that we have within the school division, we would not be able to offer four days full instruction for all children. We have recommended to you that we follow the CDC's guidelines. If we are in compliance with the guidelines and, or the guidance from the CDC, which requires, for example, six feet of social distancing, there is no way we can bring back a class of 30 children on the same day. So, and, and you have to think about classroom space. You also have to think about transportation on buses, of having to ensure that kids are socially distanced on, on school buses. So it's, it's just simply a matter of simple mathematics. You cannot get 30 cla- kids in a classroom the same day and have them all, um, be si- six feet apart. Um, so those would be the two major challenges. And I know the CDC speaks to cohorting children, which we have tried our very best to do in our A house, in our B house, in our C house as well, which are, which is our virtual scholars academy children. And so, um, that would certainly eliminate cohorting. Um, we also have to think about the amount of people. We have huge high schools, for example, like Norview High School, which has almost, you know, 2,000 children. There's just no way that we would be able to adhere to those guidelines and, and bring children in safely and staff into the buildings under those conditions.
Okay, thank you very much. My comment is a concern about the pre-K students coming in, um, for, um, either, um, the, under the, the hybrid model. Um, I would not be in support of that. That would be both for the pre-K three and the pre-K four-year-old students. I think that there is a concern that I, um, have about them being able to comply with wearing their mask, um, being able to be attended to should they have an accident in class. Um, those children are very much, um, uh, sensitive to touch and, and coming together with their p. And I think that with trying the CDC recommendation, I would feel more comfortable as a board member, making the decision to keep them virtual, um, every day so that they are getting some form of in-person instruction every day versus the hybrid model. And I share that with everyone to say that's, that's where I stand on this.
One of the things that I'm just gonna, in, in response to that, is, um, I think it was, um, uh, Dr. Paul, who kept using the term when talking about the pre, the, um, well, about the children. He used the term development, develop, I'm sorry.
Ms. Frayley, developmentally appropriate.
Developmentally appropriate. So, um, would, I'm assuming that means pre-K? Or, or am I wrong at not being an educator?
It could be any child. It could be a child with a disability. It just depends on, yeah, it could be any child, not necessarily a pre-K child.
Do you believe that pre-K are, can, um, can follow these criteria? Are they developing, is that developmentally, is that a developmental?
I, I can't make that assessment of every child that we have in pre-K. It depends on the individual child.
Okay. Okay, and, um, so, uh, Ms. Smith, Ms. Campson, and Ms. Basim.
Oops, okay. One of my concerns was already covered, and it's with the pre-K students and their ability to comply with the requirements of social distancing, wearing the mask and all of that. And whether or not it would be wise for us to bring them in as a part of the initial phase. Um, my other question is, has to deal with or concern the four consecutive days. So, Dr. Birdsong, help me to understand, especially grades K through three on chart 26, when we look at the average student per teacher, they're around that 16, 17 range? And so I was wondering, what is the, um, maximum capacity to the, the average classroom for those grades? And whether or not, um, social distancing could be accomplished with the average number of students in those grades? Where they would be able to attend school for, for consecutive days?
And, and based on the review that my administration has done, um, this is one of the reasons why we put the children in different houses. It's because there was the concern related to social distancing. And so that's why the children were split in half to ensure that we were able to adhere to those guidelines.
So with these smaller classes of 16, 17 students, the average first-grade classroom isn't big enough to put them six feet apart?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And you have to consider bus rides as well, Ms. Smith. Because we'd have to transport the children. Say, for example, we did have, you know, a large enough space for that, then we would have transportation issues because the kids would also have to be socially distant on the bus, on the school buses, on their ride to school.
But are we, are we running all of the buses for this group here? I'm, I'm looking at K to K through three, which would take out about 1,300 students.
So I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding your question.
Um, I'm saying with the busing, um, we're not running buses for the entire district in the phasing in process. And on your, the recommendation we have, we're talking about bringing in the smaller group first that can, that includes your K, K through three. Um, and I'm basically saying, with those smaller numbers in that grade, can the buses handle picking all of them up while social distancing? What, in other words, are we using 100% of the buses for this, this small group here?
Please believe me, we are. Okay, and utilizing all of our transportation resources. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, um, any more questions about the first phase? Ms., I'm sorry, I had this, Ms. Campson, and Ms. Basim, and Mr. Jordan, did I see your hand up?
Yes.
Lauren, Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Could we see, uh, Dr. Birdsong's option two? Ms. Tanner?
It's, uh, slide 31.
Oh, wow. Did you memorize all those?
I haven't. I'm cheating.
See, make it harder. And while this is being looked for, my concern is too many, too fast creates more and more possibilities of hitting snags, um, if you're putting so many in. I like this one better, and, and I would like it even more better if we could still get through this time period. I don't mean these particular days, but this time of taking, um, two months to get it in and still spread them out a little bit more, especially in the top one. especially in the top one where we have we have all the, the special needs kids, and then we have all kindergarten through third grade or pre-K, whichever one we go with, coming in at the same time. And I, I just feel like maybe we could spread it out within that time period, but either way, even if we went with this one exactly, I still would, um, I like this one a lot better because it's a little bit slower, a little bit less children coming each time, and we're doing something different. I think it always, there's no way you could plan anything that's not gonna have a few things go wrong. But the more, the more you speed it up and the more numbers of children that are concerned, the more likely you are to run into some snags and you have less time to work it out. But of the two options, if these are the two we're choosing from and not creating a third one, that's why I would like to see us go with this one instead of the first one, because I don't want it rushed so much, I like it to come a little bit easier so that we can make sure that we get everyone done safely rather than trying to rush it.
But Ms. Campson, we, we did discuss having the fourteen-day indicator trend.
All right, well, that would be what kicks off doing this. So in other words, that would have to happen before we push a button on starting this, and that's what I thought we were doing now, is determining so we know ahead and we're not meeting again when it, when the fourteen-day indicators and, and Dr. Birdsong says, okay, according to what you voted on in health metrics, it looks like it's gonna be time for us to start the staggering in, and so that's when this would start, whenever that day comes. And, and so I'm just saying that when it does start, I'd like to see it, if I, if I could put my hand over it, I would cover up the dates, and this is the stagger plan that'll happen when according to the health metrics, it says, okay, we push the button. I just like the way this is spread out a little bit more than option one.
So thank you, thank you for bringing that up. I want to hear, so, because I think, I was thinking that it was the phase in and we won't move to the next phase until we're sure that we can keep down in the greens for fourteen consecutive days. And then with face and, you know, if we, with the two group, after phase two, we, we'd make sure that we could stay in the greens until the third day.
I would see, and the way I was interpreting it was, once we hit the go button, then this kicks in, whichever option we use automatically kicks in, and we're not sitting down replanning again. In other words, we're saying to our parents, once we hit the, the health metric, then this is what it's gonna look like, this is your plan. Because the parents said, what's the plan for reentry? And rightly so, they're asking that, this is the reentry plan, and then the, without these dates. And so when the health metrics have the greens, the double greens, then it's ready to go, and then Dr. Birdsong just pushes the go button and she starts implementing it, she's ready to do that. I mean, she's still, I mean, her people have been working like crazy to be ready for everything. And Mr. Catalda, Dr. Catalda, thank you, thank you for having those cameras, because it was at the top of my list, and I didn't even have to ask it because you've done such a good job getting them in so quickly. But that's what I was saying. Between the two options, my, what I was just saying to the rest of the members was, I would prefer it be a little bit slower and a little bit less numbers at a time. So I like option two better than option one.
What I'm saying is that I don't see us, if, if we bring in, we, we trigger, you know, go into phase one and we see the numbers spike, I don't see us then adding more children to that, so that's why I.
We'd just be hitting, that we'd be hitting the stop button.
Well, that, that's, I guess another way of saying it is we wouldn't move to phase two.
Right, but we would assume that this is the way we go, and we're hoping that everything continues fine with the metrics, is how I was seeing it.
But we can't hope, we have to have specific data showing us that.
Absolutely, I'm not disagreeing with that, so I just was clarifying how I was interpreting it. But either way, either interpretation, I like option two, okay?
Okay, Dr. Birdsong, you had your hand up.
I was just trying to kind of bring all of this together again because I feel like we're, we're still spinning our wheels and, and saying kind of the same things over and over again. I think what I heard the board say, please correct me if I'm wrong, it, it sounded as if that there was some concern around our metrics, that the board is currently as a whole concerned about what our metrics look like and, and the direction that they're trending. That there's a possibility that you would like to start, continue with virtual online until February the fourth, which would be the start of second semester. And during that time, we could start implementing the phase in depending upon, again, the health metrics with the fourteen days of us, with us being in the lowest or lower risk categories. Is that what the board is, is trying to say as, as a whole?
No, we, we voted that whenever there, that as you, you're tracking the health matrix, that once we hit a fourteen-day trend, which has us in the greens and primary and secondary indicators, that would trigger the first phase in, so now we're going through the different phases. You know, we're not gonna wait until November, or February fourth. We would like, you know, it's when we have fourteen days of greens.
Well, Ms. Martin, if I can, if I can, can I, if I can clarify here? So I think, I think that with what Dr. Birdsong said, that we need to have a baseline. If we're, if we come to November the fourth and we're in the moderate zone and let's say the higher risk zone and our, as our core indicator, I don't think that we're gonna feel comfortable as a board to say, yes, let's, let's follow through with this plan. However, if we do come to November fourth, since we have established some health matrices, if we come and we say, hey, the fourteen trend has been green, then this plan, let's say theoretically adopted, then November fourth, yes, you can proceed with this. But if, if you start to see, you know, yellow or orange pop up, then we have, then we, A, can't proceed with the next phase in, and then B, might have to retract with the students that we have in, in in-person instruction. And so that's, that's where the very difficult decision-making comes for us as a board. That's why I said we can either go, we can go down this road and we can say, you know, let's just be clear, if we're all in green, th- then we have the, the go-ahead, or if we wanted to say, we wanted to go, let's say hard and fast, February fourth, all virtual, then we could do that too. But with this proposed timeline right here on November the fourth, as long as we have had a fourteen-day trend of all green, then theoretically, if we vote for this tonight, then yes, you can proceed with November the fourth.
Right, okay, um, I have Tanya, or Ms. Bassin, Mr. Jordan and then Ms. Smith up next.
So, we are not in the green based on what you, what you, what the board approved. So therefore, the likelihood of it being fourteen days of green is not happening. So November fourth is not really on the table. So I think, can we just acknowledge that? I, I, I'll just tell you where I stand, I'm not hearing, my understanding of this hybrid model is not clear. I'm not going to support a hybrid model that is, presents health risks as, as well as, you know, potentially academic ones, unless I know what is occurring on the days where they are not in person. And not only that, I'm concerned for our teachers, I'm concerned for their, their workload. I'm concerned that we're not prepared at this point to, to implement this schedule because, like I said earlier, I don't know what transportation is gonna look like. I don't feel like, and, and yes, you know, I know what the seating is going to look like on the bus, but I don't know, are we fully staffed? Do we have all the bus drivers ready, ready to rock and roll with this plan? I, I don't know that, I, I don't feel like I've heard that yet. And I'm just telling you how, how I feel from what I've observed. And so there, there are so many pieces to this that I, I can't even answer this question right now, and, and, and don't feel like I have the information to make that decision. So I, that's, that's just where I, where I stand right now, but November fourth, I mean, based on the decision the board made, that's not happening.
Okay, so the, the administration presented a plan that they're ready to pull the trigger on whenever we say go. So to say that you need, you're not confident that the bus drivers are there or, you know, transportation's ready, those sorts of things, they are telling you it is. Dr. Birdsong said this several times, that, that if we accept this plan, they're gonna do it whenever we say go. So I'm not sure what other information you're looking for. You'll have to ask that specific question, what other information are you looking for to, to say, yes, we have enough bus? I mean, just one question.
Well, that, that was just one piece of it, but let's go to the academic part. I mean, so Monday and Tuesday, you have House A receiving instruction. And now based on, you know, this, the information provided about now House C is VSA, I mean, VSA in itself is a whole other conversation, I mean, so, so on Thursday and Friday then, House B and C are now receiving in-person instruction, which is different from what we heard on October seventh. So I'm just, I'm just wondering when we are going to start to pull that apart and really get to what it is our kids are receiving? Are they receiving new instruction on the days that they are not there? Or are they hearing, you know, the same instruction? And then what does that do for the teacher? Is it realistic to have wide-angle cameras in the classroom? Do we need additional staff to support that teacher? I'm hearing so much concern around that piece that I'm not comfortable at this point supporting that. I mean, yes, we are being told one thing, but I'm also, we are also hearing a lot of things from the field, from the people on the frontline, that these things need more time to be worked out and in place. And so I take those concerns to heart.
I think, we, I mean, we're not trying to dismiss the concerns, but we haven't even, they haven't even had the, the administration hasn't even had the chance to implement the plan that they have been planning for, for months, that they have put everything, all the resources together. They're not promoting, proposing a plan and then saying, we might be able to do this or we might have the resources for that. They've, they've secured the resources to be able to put together the plan, the two proposals that they've proposed, so.
I'll ask a very basic question. Are, so are the, are the cameras present and installed in every school building that is going to have VSA students as of today? Are they in the buildings, are they in the buildings and installed?
That question was already answered.
What was it, I missed it then?
There, there's about sixteen, sixteen thousand or hundred cameras that were already, that have already arrived, and the rest will be arriving early next week.
So the last time we met, the question was asked around camera, around cameras and how many had been ordered and if they had been ordered yet. Dr. Catalda responded to that, and I think I chimed in when he was asked if you could guarantee, or if we could guarantee that we would have the cameras, you know, in, ready for in-person instruction. And I pushed back on that because I, I said it to you, I wasn't sure when they would get here. They are here now, as Dr. Catalda just stated. He stated that there's one thousand six hundred cameras that the, the vision received today. So, or yesterday, sometime this week, all of the days are running together. So we do have the cameras and they have not been installed, because they have not been installed yet, we just received them.
Okay, and what I saw, I, I looked them up on YouTube and it's just a plug, really. I mean, it's very simple, there's not a lot of, you know, wiring or anything that has to happen.
Right, so will our teachers have, the teachers that have VSA students, will they have another teacher in the classroom to help guide them with the, do we, are we providing additional staffing to our teachers or support for our teachers that, that will have to, you know, carry the burden of, of managing their online students as well as their in-person students?
The board is fully aware of our teacher allocation. As per our budget discussions from last year, we have not increased our teacher allocation. And so whatever we agreed upon, was voted upon by the board last year, still stands at this time. There's no additional budget for teachers. And, and quite honestly, if we did have additional monies, we would have a challenge of, of being able to secure teachers, just like every other division in the region, in the state. Everyone is losing teachers at this time because of what we're, the challenges that we're currently facing. Many teachers have decided to retire or to do other things. So it would not be realistic, even if we had an allocation of additional three hundred teachers, we would not be able to fill those positions.
Can I just add too, remember that it's not just the VSA students, that, that class, Group A and Group B are getting the same instru- the VS, VSA students are not getting any less instruction than, than the virtual Group A and virtual B. So, they're just getting it four days a week because they choose not to go to in-person in the hybrid model.
But is it, is it accurate to say that they will not be receiving instruction as they currently are now with, with it being, i- is that accurate?
That is exactly what Dr. Paul explained in his presentation this evening. He even gave you an example of a classroom and what that would look like for teachers and kids.
I'm, I'm talking about content-wise, like would they be getting new instruction every day?
And he has claimed that they would be four days a week, exactly, eight, seven, it's Wednesday.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay, I have Mr. Jordan next and then Ms. Smith. And Dr. Gabriel, did you have your hand up?
You can go with them first because they were, they were ahead.
First, I just, just for scheduling, just want to note it's a few minutes after seven. Yes, in terms of the proposal, prior to the pandemic, our data identified, we have students that need equity attention. After the move to the shutdown from March, we looked at data in July that shows students with incompletes and other equity needs. And what we said in our August reopening plan is that we would prioritize supports for those students. In the proposal that we have, based upon the discussions that we've had today, I would take the first bullet that has the equity and opportunity students. I would expand it beyond special education self-contained, I would expand that. And, and just whenever we have the opportunity to open in-person, serve those students only. Serve those students only, serve those students well, serve those students with the equity that we, that we talk about. For a long time, the early learning was something that we valued as a, as a school division. We are down fifteen pre-K classes already. When you look at some of our attendance data, look at the iDashboard, even at some of our pre-K centers, you can see where there's some, apparently, based upon what the dashboard seems to indicate, that we have some attendance challenges at the pre-K level, as well as attendance challenges at several of our buildings in this virtual environment. So I said this summarily at the end of the last meeting, I would like to see us just do those equity and opportunity students in that first bullet with whatever additional suggestions that Ms. Campson has talked about today and has been relentless, thankfully, in talking about. And serve those students when there's an opportunity for the buildings to open, under whatever conditions we say is appropriate, and have those students served and served well. Because I, I agree with everyone about the safety measures, but we also are in danger of losing generations of students academically. And so we've said over and over again that we prioritize those students. We said that in August, we said that in July, we're saying that again. So I still would recommend that whenever school can reopen, that that's the group that we focus on, and we don't phase anybody else in until we feel that we are serving those students very well, so, thank you.
Mr. Jordan, for clarification, I think at the beginning I heard you, it sounded like you were saying only expand the special education from self-contained to all special education students and only let them in in the first. And only let them in in the first phase? Or were you saying expand the special education students as well as entrance of English language learners and pre-K through three?
I, I'd like to be able to say it in a way that um let the data drive us. Um, but I'm just going off of the, the bullet that we have here. Um, you know, I want to be able to yield to the administration in terms of their recommendation based upon the discussion. But I'm just taking that first bullet that we have there. Um, and serving those students well. And the only reason why I mentioned uh self-contained, because in parentheses, it says special education self-contained. And I'm saying if there are additional students uh that have IEPs that also could be served, I don't want to deny those students that opportunity. So that's what I was saying in terms of uh of expanding. But I think if we just did that pre-K, I'm just gonna call it pre-K three plus um groups of students. I think it allows us to deal with social distancing. I think it allows for us to give a focus on staffing. I think it allows us to give a focus on a lot of things. While at the same time, then taking this virtual environment and addressing the equity issues that we know we need to address with the um virtual learning, uh including as uh former superintendent used to say, uh raising the ceiling and the floor simultaneously. So that's what I think is within our bailiwick and, and the board hopefully can provide some support for and give the administration the leeway to, to do that. And we know we're gonna have to come back and deal with all kinds of things in terms of health metrics and budgets and all kinds of things. So I'm just trying to narrow the focus and the scope based upon the equity and opportunity students that I hear us say are, is something that we want to achieve in terms of equity and, and opportunity.
And you're saying narrow, but I'm hearing you say, I'm hearing you also say expand it to IEP students.
When I say narrow, I'm, I'm saying I'm not talking about pre-K through twelve. I'm talking about pre-K through three plus. So when I say narrow, I mean not try to bring large numbers of students back from pre-K through twelfth grade. I'm saying narrow so that the only students we would bring back for a while would be those students that I've now kind of described as the pre-K three plus students based upon the first bullet in the recommendation that the administration has brought for the board's consideration.
Okay. Okay, um, and then, so Ms. Smith, um what are your thoughts around?
Yeah, Mr. Jordan hit on quite a bit, and I think I've said this before. If not, I'm gonna say it again. I am in favor of the first bullet, the equity and opportunity students. Uh, I'm a little hesitant when it comes to pre-K. I do have concern uh with that little group. Um, their ability to just comply and I'm, I'm sure they can understand things, um, but their ability to comply, how long it would take them. Um, they're somewhat more of a hands-on group, I think, than some of the other ones. Uh, so I'm just concerned about their ability to um be able to social distance and face mask and washing their little hands and all those other things that's gonna be required of them in addition to learning the subject matter. Um, I am concerned, and I don't know if I should say this to the end, but I am extremely concerned that we're gonna look up and it's gonna be June thirtieth and we have spent or allowed a whole year to go by and students not receive uh in-person academic instruction.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Um, Dr. Gabriel?
So what I'd like to do is, um, I'm, I'm hearing Mr. Jordan, um, what he has put forth on the table based around the uh proposal from Dr. Birdsong. If we can at least just kind of put it forth as a motion and then take it up from that point, I think that will help to get us to further direction. So, and I'm also with Ms. uh Smith as far as the concern for the pre-K. So, um.
I'd actually like to, to um vote on the whole proposal, like continue to go through it and make one motion to go on the whole proposal.
Okay, well then I'll, I'll just say where I stand then. I um, I think that Dr. Birdsong and her staff have done a tremendous job with putting forth a recommendation based upon what the school board has asked them to do. And I applaud them for that. And I know that they have been working very, very hard. I've already shared my concerns about the pre-K, but I am also very concerned about a, a teacher being able to manage between the students that she, that he or she has in front of them as well as the students that are in, that are virtually in the classroom and delivering that, that high-quality instruction. Do I think it can be done? Yes, but I'm, I'm, I have concern. Um, and therefore, if you are going to put forth a motion about adopting this timeline, um, I'm not sure that I could support it at this point. I would, I, I, I couldn't at this point.
Any other concerns about the first phase? Okay, let's move on to the second phase. Um, fourth and fifth grade students. Any changes to this? Okay. Um, what about the third, third phase, all middle school students? Okay, and then the fourth phase? So really, um, going back to the, to the first one, the only, the changes that I've heard is to, I'm, um and um, Ms. Smith and Dr. Gabriel both have reservations about pre-K. And Dr. Gabriel, you'd said that you are not um comfortable with the hybrid model at all, correct? And then, um, and then Mr. Jordan, um, you had said that you would like to do the first phase um, eh with the additional of um addition of some IEPs that are, um, that are identified to be added to that. Is that what I heard? I- is that correct?
Only.
What's that?
Only.
Yes. Okay. And Ms. Bastine, go ahead. Did you have something to add?
Yes. Um, I'm in, I'm in alignment with Mr. Jordan in terms of the who. I'm not in support of um a hybrid model. Um, so that, that's where I differ. I think that group of students we talked about equity needs, you know, the maximum amount of time learning. I do have a question about the pre-K. Um, so as Mr. Jordan mentioned earlier, I believe that, so the fifteen pre-K teachers, they couldn't be used to um provide daily instruction. Um, for, you know, that way you can have more classes with smaller class sizes. Is that, is that something, is that a feasible option? Given that the, that we have reduced that number of, that's a, that's a pretty large number of pre-K classrooms. Um.
Reassigned.
They're reassigned at different grade, at an, at other, other grade levels?
Yes. They, they've been reassigned according to their certifications.
Okay.
Yeah. And Mr. Billups, you can chime in if I misspoke, but the last conversation we had about that, um, we talked about those teachers having to be reassigned based on the reduction of student enrollment.
Yes.
Is that accurate, Mr. Billups?
Yes, that's true, exactly.
Okay.
Okay, well, um, so, Mr. Clanton and Ms. Campson, what are, what are your, uh, so, so far, I'm just trying to see what the consensus is, um, because I'm not really getting a majority. There's um on changes, so, um, so far, we have Ms. and Ms. um, and Dr. Gabriel who are against the hybrid altogether. Um, is anyone else against the hybrid model?
I am.
Mr. Clanton?
And my, my problem with the hybrid model is that it's two days together and then five days off. It needs to be spread out, it, or we could look at especially for elementary, half-day every day except Wednesday in the morning, and then group B in the afternoon. So that they'd be getting direct instruction through developmental reading at the elementary level. And at the secondary level, just split those days. So it's Monday and Thursday and Tuesday and Friday instead of Monday and Tuesday, and then five days goes by. If you give them Monday, and then they have Tuesday, Wednesday to work, follow-up work, and then you give them Thursday, and then they get another day, I think that it would be instructionally more effective. But a- aside from that, and Mr. Jordan, one thing, the um, the, the the IEP kids that are inclusion, that's the goal for them, being inclusion, and they're in with their classmates, and then the special education teacher comes in and gives them part of the time support, which I assume they're doing now on virtual, is that that's what the special education teachers are doing. So I would hate to see them pulled out of their classroom because it's so important for them to make the move from self-contained to inclusion. Just, just as a little point on that. But aside from that, without the dates, I think this is a good plan, and I, and I really agree with Mr. Jordan when he said, let's really focus on the equity-opportunity kids, which are our highest priority. Uh, so the first bullet, I'd like to make sure that that is the focus and that's going smoothly, which is kind of like what I was saying, when I wanted it to be less kids spread out. So we make sure we got it right at the beginning. So, um, and that's all I can say. I think with the little tweaks, most of us, and I, I also share the concern about the pre-K kids. Sorry, I forgot to mention that.
Okay, but again, this is, well, first, the students will be getting instruction four days a week. And so it's actually, they're getting an addition of in-person instruction with the hybrid model, whereas right now they're only getting virtual instruction four days a week. They'd be getting the addition of in-person instruction.
But with, with, now with the hybrid model, my understanding is the second, they get two days, and then the second two days are without direct teacher involvement. That's all Canvas or something.
They're actually watching a live teacher and can ask questions to the teacher on the chatroom. So they're, they're watching the classroom happening. So it's not asynchronous. The only asynchronous day is Wednesdays, which they're currently getting. And that's to do some work and some catch-up work for the students and professional development and planning for the teachers. So they're getting live instruction either in-person or on the computer four out of the five days.
If the teacher's delivering instruction to a class, she's not gonna be continually running back to her desk to look and see if there's a chat thing that comes on on a day-to-day basis. I mean, teachers are wonderful. We have great teachers in Norfolk, but they're not magicians. And, and if you're delivering instruction, you're not continually looking some classes. It's not like you're giving a lecture. It's a very interactive process. And I just fear that it's not interactive enough at the, at, in the elementary grades. And, and that's just my personal opinion.
Okay, I know, but I've heard from a couple of other, um, a, a couple of board members. And Dr. Birdsong and her team, I just want to remind you that they have committed to professional development. That has been going on. And, and so I, you know.
I'm not disagreeing with that, Dr. Martin. I'm not disagreeing with any of those things. I'm just giving you my opinion.
I, I understand, but I'm just, I'm stating it out there because this has been um said, said more than once. You're not the only one. And, and, you know, so Dr. Birdsong has committed time to professional development. You know, we talked about it on Canvas and these other tools to try, to try to make, you know, do the best we can um, and to learn new things and be adaptable. And to that, that adaptability requires that professional development so that we can continue to give um excellent educational instruction, be it in-person, virtual, or hybrid. So you know, we're, I, I just, I just want to remind everyone that that was a commitment that Dr. Birdsong and her staff had made.
And I'm sure, and I understand she's very committed and all. I'm giving you, I thought we were giving our opinions here. And my opinion, as a lifelong educator, is it's not interactive enough for elementary students, especially the younger they get, watching it. If I was sitting there watching, sitting at, in my, at home in front of a monitor, watching it, I would tune out. Because it's not interactive enough for me, for young children. That's my opinion, it's my professional opinion. And so I have that opportunity to state it. And that's what I did. Thank you.
Uh, we are at um seven twenty-six. We have an agenda. The agenda states that we should have been in business by seven o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
We have a whole bunch of items that needed to come before that. Um, we need to either table this to come back at a certain time, but I know that we have individuals who are waiting for us. Uh, and this is an important discussion, and we need to make sure that we take care of it. But we need to be respectful to the agenda and either make a decision that we're changing the agenda um, or going back. Um, but I, I just needed to raise that point at this particular point.
Okay. Um, so, do we want to vote on this? Can I, is there anyone who wants to put a motion together right now to vote to accept the optional proposed timeline? Or optional proposed phase and plan?
Is that including the time, the date of November fourth or without the date?
Well, we, I'm
I mean. We can take the dates out, we can take the dates out. And we can just put it out, and just be, and, and because we're putting the motion out, doesn't mean that we, you know, agree or disagree. We're just getting ourselves closer to the, a decision. So I'll put it out there. I'll, I'll put out there. Um, I'd like to make a motion uh to adopt the superintendent's um proposed um educational plan for instruction as presented for um, should we be specific and say option two, since there are two options in this presentation?
You should say option two, and for me, the dates make an important factor, whether or not I say ye or nay. Just want to make that clear.
Well, there shouldn't be dates.
I mean, you could say that, you could, we could have it as is, and if it's green, great. If we get green by November fourth, let's go, but the likelihood is not. So I mean, we could just accept it as is.
Okay, so I'll I move that we accept the proposed uh option two as presented by Dr. Birdsong.
Can I get a second? The motion dies.
The motion dies. So Dr. Mar, I think what, what we're hearing here is that there's, it sounds like there's a majority of people that aren't comfortable with hybrid, okay? Not, not, not to discredit the hard work that Dr. Birdsong and her has done, absolutely not. They have delivered on what we have asked. But we're just, we're just not there. And, and that's okay. So if, and if, and if we can't deliver four days in-person instruction, which is what I had brought up earlier, because we don't have the personnel, the transportation, it really just leaves us with virtual. I mean, that's, that's really what it boils down to. And that's okay, that's okay. But I think that's what the, the community, we needed to kind of go through these discussions. And I very appreciate Mr. Jordan, Ms. Campson's concern about the equity and opportunity students. I'm very happy to revisit that. But for right now, it just seems that by process of elimination, where we are right now is no on hybrid, no on four days a week. We're left with virtual. So maybe we need to just take it with virtual for right now, because we want to play it safe, and because we know we can at least deliver consistent good instruction with virtual. I mean, the survey, you know, did say that most parents, I mean, there is a good percentage of parents that did say they were comfortable with the virtual. Um, and they can just build upon it, and they can continue to perfect that during this time of cold and flu season and et cetera.
Right. I do want to say, um, there, I mean, because there are some parents who really do want their children to go back to in-person instruction. And what I liked about the hybrid model was that it offered options for both. And I think that our administration has done such a great job so far, being so accommodating and working really hard to not just meet our, meet our demands, but the demands of our community and to, you know, to show that Norfolk Public Schools is a public school for all children. And um, and so, you know, while, you know, it's not always the best for my children, we, I can't think about just my children. I'm thinking about all of the children out there. So I just want to make sure that we do realize So I just want to make sure that we do realize that there are parents that are looking to go back to school. Um, but I do feel com- more comfortable, because, I mean, this is a, a difficult discussion, it's very conflicting, because we, we want to go back to safe instruction, but as I've said in many of these meetings, we cannot do that unless our whole community comes together and follows the CDC guidelines, Norfolk Department of Health guidelines, that say wear masks, do not gather in large gatherings, you know, we know what they are. And so we need, we need to, as a community, come together and say, if we want our COVID rates to come down, then, and we want our schools to open, and we want, you know, we want to have, uh, a safe, if safety and health are top priorities, then we all have to do our part. Um, so, Miss, okay, Mr. Camp, Clanton, Ms. Bassin, and then I'd like a motion to go into, um, executive session.
All right, I, I, I'm going to give this one last. Based on what, uh, Dr. Birdsong stated, and what I was attempting to speak on earlier, um, I like to propose this motion here, that I think will bring clarity to the night and bring clarity to the community. Um, I move that we maintain all virtual instruction until February fourth of twenty twenty-one, whereby a fourteen-day, um, decline or stabilization in the lower or lowest CDC indicator threshold will be utilized to determine in-person instruction. If the threshold is not met by the district, uh, if the threshold is not met, the district will maintain all virtual instruction until the threshold is met.
Second.
Can I ask, just for clarification? Can you explain again what you were saying about the February fourth piece, and the, you're saying if the uh, metrics change prior to February fourth, or you're saying after February fourth?
I'm saying right now that we maintain the February fourth being a clear date. But I'm, be perfectly honest, Mr. Jordan, I am more than, if the numbers look like they're, they're trending lower, then the board come back and, and make a separate decision, but I think tonight, we need to send a clear message of decision-making by this board to the community, that we have a date that they can look towards. And if something changes in between there, we're meeting, we have several meetings before that, we can possibly make changes. I'd be open to looking at those other groups potentially, but I think that we need to make an affirmative decision tonight, send clear direction to the administration, and determine how we're going to measure that, so that people understand and we understand in the administration, so that's.
I don't have any objection to that, I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding the fourteen-day piece, what, in, in the motion that you put forward, for clarity. Are you saying that we would be all virtual until February fourth, and then after February fourth, whenever we find this fourteen-day window, we would then consider reopening, is that what you're saying in the motion?
So, yes and no, um, if we know that February fourth is supposed to be the time that we're supposed to end virtual learning, then I would go, uh, fourteen days before the fourth, whatever that date may be, and look and find out whether or not we have met the threshold, or we're below, in those two lowest or lowest categories, and all green. And if we are, then we, then parents, we're communicating to them that based after February fourth, we're going to start phasing in, and that's when we'll go back, because honestly, we need more time for us as a board to come together, determine what this phase-in program's going to be, and I think that that's the thing that we don't have tonight, we need more time to figure that out, and this gives us the time to do that and to do it right, and to, to put the necessary resources into making sure that virtual learning is taking place.
Thank you.
I really think we, we just accomplished that, we, we just accomplished that with the, the first motion that was passed.
I'd like to stay on the motion and keep focused on this and take a vote, be honest.
And this is my discussion piece, I'm just saying, I think we already accomplished.
Ms. Campson has her hand.
Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Mr. Clanton, I think that, that the motion is, is stated, talking about the motion, contradicts the vote we took at the beginning of the meeting, which says that we're using these metrics. So, so that needs to be somewhere in here, like your motion, but it says it, unless, unless the metrics are met based on the last vote. In other words, it sounds like, well, why did we vote for the metrics, and if the metrics go all green, and here we are in, on January first, we're going to wait another month before we start talking about it, why did we even make that as the baseline? So it just seems like if you add that little piece.
Campson, if I do that, we don't have a plan to go with right now, we just took a vote on a plan. This right now at least gives us stability and, and, and clear direction to the community, that this is what we're working towards. It gives us then time in November and December to get our act together as a board, and correlate around with the administration, what the plan will be. This gives a clear direction tonight, so I implore to my colleagues for us to take some actions, send clear direction back to the community, and then for us to get back together, and then kind of, we'll have a real work session to talk about how we're going to phase this thing, and that's all.
Well, I kept a concern with, with, anyway, all right, I'm not going to extend the discussion, let's just vote.
Okay. Any more discussion? Ms. Tanner, call the role, please, call the question.
Bassin?
Nay.
Campson?
No.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
No.
Martin?
No.
So this is where we're left with, if, if, if we, if we can, if we can't use the CDC metrics as our springboard, that, that's the first step, and if we can't go beyond that step, then what options are we left with? Team, team, this is us coming together as a team. So we've, we've, we've got to, we've got to iron this out, so that we can give some clear direction to the community. And I know that it was not ideal what Mr. Clanton proposed, but at least it would give the staff and instruction some clear guidance. So, so if we, we say we want low risk, then, then what is the next step? From there, is the, and we, and nobody wants hybrid, or the majority doesn't want hybrid, and we can't do four day a week in person, so then do we just maybe say only have the equity and opportunity students and the self-contained students go in? I, I'm not sure where, that's, all have to come together at some point.
I think Ms. Campson. Didn't we, didn't we just, so, we had the motion for the, um, on the metrics, and then we had the motion on the proposal. So, what, where's, I'm, I'm not sure what, I'm trying to help you here, what, what isn't, what's not clear?
The only motion that we have passed is a motion for CDC metrics, that is the only motion that we have passed. We haven't amended that motion, we haven't, and the, and the, and the motion that I put forward about Dr. Birdsong's proposed timeline failed because it didn't even have a second. So that, on record, that is the only, Mr. Clanton, correct?
You're correct.
Okay, that is the only motion that we have taken, we haven't taken any other motions. Ms. Campson had a motion that was seconded, but then we tabled it, that was about as far as we did, and then we just did this motion now with Mr. Clanton, and that has failed.
So, with that, because we're at seven thirty-seven, Madam Chair, I move that we table this discussion after our business discussion agenda, uh, making it item six point zero four. Um, and that we amend the agenda, uh, because I know we have executive closed session items. Uh, honestly, I, I think that we have to do that at the end, because we're supposed to be in our business meeting, like.
Right, this is what I tried to do earlier, remember?
I, I understand.
Just to be clear, you can't vote on the consent agenda until the executive session, unless you're just not going to discuss those matters, and vote on it without a discussion.
We, yeah, we're having an executive session next.
Okay.
So do you need a motion to amend the agenda? We can, I move that we amend the agenda to move into closed executive session and to follow up after our.
Session is, is on the agenda as the next item, that doesn't need to be amended, I'm trying to find.
We're bringing back the plan for in-person.
Yes.
After our, um, making it.
Zero four was what I had previously, um, recommended to amend the, uh, the dis- decision discussion agenda by adding six point zero four to, um, to continue the reopening discuss, the transition discussion.
While everyone's thinking about that, could I s- suggest that we schedule a special work session to take care of this, so that we don't occupy yet the next, this, the next meeting that we have with this that we're taking so long making a decision on? If we could have a, a meeting and if they tech us the whole day, we could work it out, so that we're set, instead of this, we, we don't. This board needs to get together and make decisions for parents. What we've, what we have on the books right now is that the virtual ended will end at the end of of the, yeah, at the end of October, and we don't have what we're doing after that. And we need to have some clear direction for parents, if I was a parent, I would need direction. And we don't have it, so we need to, we need to take our time and sit down together and have them, and have a work session that doesn't take up all this time for regular meetings, and, and not leave that room until we have got a clear plan for our parents to look at and plan from. And we know that we've got the metrics that lays the bottom line for all of this, so that if we're saying right now, fine, we follow the metrics, we have fourteen days, it kicks in. We need to have something like this optional time, proposed timeline. But we need to work out the details before we put it on a vote, and we need to do that without taking up another whole regularly scheduled meeting. So I, that would be what I'd like to see, is let's just take an afternoon or something and work this out. So we need to do that sooner rather than later, because parents need to know what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. Uh, Dr. Birdsong?
Um, respectfully, I can respect what Ms. Campson is saying, but truly, there, there's no reason why the board can't make a decision this evening. You asked us for data, we went back every time that you asked us for a specific set of data. We have provided that to you. You have every piece of information and data that you need to make a decision about what the learning modality should look like for our children moving forward. If you, uh, are putting the safety and, and, and health of our children and staff first and foremost, you have the health metrics. Dr. Gibson provided information related to our local metrics, our regional metrics, and I also provided some trends to you, um, related to the number of cases, the percent positivity, dating back to March. Our parents and our community, they deserve better, and they need to hear a decision this evening. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but we have, we, we continue to spin our wheels on this. We're going round and round, and I do believe that this board can make a thoughtful decision tonight. So our parents and our community will know, and our teachers and staff, they deserve to know what our direction is moving forward. There's no reason why we cannot make. There's no reason for this decision to be delayed.
Okay, so.
No, um, Ms. Bassin had her hand up.
I was just going to say, I absolutely agree with Dr. Birdsong on that, that we, we have to, we're not leaving, leaving here, I don't think we, I don't know what else, uh, we, we have to leave here with, with a decision tonight, and what I've heard, I've been kind of trying to sit here quietly and let, um, listen to all of you as we go around in circles, but, um, the piece for me, for voting against going all virtual, is that it didn't have an opportunity to bring students in if health conditions allow. And, and I'm not sure if that is the sticking point with others that also voted no, but if that is the case, if that is the case, let's work backwards, if we, if we can agree that we, we agree that most students should be virtual, but we want the opportunity that when health conditions allow, as was previously agreed upon by the board in that first motion, then we bring in and focus on, as Mr. Jordan says, we are, we are making our equity and opportunity students the focus of our phase-in. And that is where we, that is where I heard agreement around. And if that is where I'm hearing agreement around, then I think we start there. Um, because I'll tell you, that's why I voted against the all-virtual, because it didn't have an opportunity to bring in those students who most need to be in person. Um, so, so I think that we have that opportunity available. Mr. Clant, I mean, sorry, that's, Dr. Birdsong's job was.
I'll just say where I stand, I have full faith in our administration to implement the plan as is, but I will support, I, you know, I'll support other options, so, but I'm all in on this plan, and I'm all in on hybrid. Um, you know, I'm experiencing, I will, I'm experiencing virtual, and we're going to be experiencing whatever the next phase is too. Um, you know, I, I think it's going to be great, I, I love the fact that we're going to continue online, which has been wonderful, but also we'll get two days of it in person, I think that's a vote.
Maybe it's time for all of us to compromise.
I had the floor, but since I'm going back to my.
Let's, let's make an amendment to the amendment.
Your discussion's not germane to the agenda, Madam Chair. Call the question on the motion to amend the agenda, this discussion has nothing to do about what we're talking about.
Did I get a second? I don't even know if I got a second.
I seconded the management motion, we've got a motion on the floor to amend the agenda and make six point zero four. We're not going to leave until we, we're going to come back and have a time for this, and honestly, I think we need some time to think about it, but we've got to get back to our agenda. We've got a motion on the floor, point of order.
Yes, uh, Bassin? You ready? Bassin? You're muted. We were voting to amend the agenda and move, um, the plan for in-person instruction to six point oh four, to the decision and discussion to continue discussion about the, um, plan for in-person instruction. Aye, thank you. Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Hi, thank you.
Moving to executive session.
Second.
Dr. Gabriel.
Wait, wait, I'm, I'm lost, what are we voting on? Go into executive session. What? To go into our executive session.
I was in a hurry to get you there. Uh, move the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section two point two dash three seven one one of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for. A, discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of this session is the discussion of today's regular personnel agenda and the personnel review of the Office of Communications and Media Relations. B, discussion or consideration of disciplinary and any other matters concerning students in Norfolk Public Schools that would involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record pursuant to subsection two of the above cited code section. The subject of this section of the session is the discussion of today's regular student support services agenda. And then C, consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members concerning actual or probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection seven and eight of the above cited code section. The subjects of this section of the motion are the two set out in subsections B and C above. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith? And Martin?
Aye.
All right, I'll see you on the other link.